An extra moment before a meeting is not a wasted thing.
Yeah, like taking an actual break?
I was a little freaked out because I haven't been to a proper meeting since.
No, actually it's been a nice like week and a half so great.
Did you do anything helping with the question?
Thank you.
Just went down to Boston, I have meetings in Boston. Who's in Boston for the meeting?
It's the big administration at times.
We've got a light.
Our request?
And then we'll have about forty or so minutes for her portion as well as questions. And then we'll go through the Q and A doc that we, that the board had. If there's any sort of follow-up questions with the answers that Julie and Kate have put in there, we can talk through it then. And then Kate has created a document that just shows sort of current status as well as any, any of the things that were in motion, updates on those, and we'll sort of use that as a basis for how we want to, this, any decisions that we want to make as a finance committee in terms of next steps when we go to the town council workshop. How's that for an agenda? Anything you guys want to add? Okay. Monique?
Great, thank you.
So April, not to put you on the spot, but what, before Monique starts, you want to just, for anybody who's watching or our, our public that's here, just give some context as to why we asked Monique to join us?
Sure, absolutely. So after we were presented to by the full school department during our two, two-day workshop, many members of the community, myself included, still had some questions around the role and the services that our instructional coaches play. Specifically, people were curious how many instructional coaches we have at each phase level and what their day-to-day roles are. And so if we could get some clarity into those things, and then I have a few other more specific questions.
Great.
Great, thank you. I apologize for the, Joel Loesinger got a bit of a cough, so I'm going to work my way through this. We have a program description, there's a link here, I'll post that on the website. I don't have paper copies for you, but can run upstairs and generate some. We have a coach, instructional coaching program that developed about 2011, 12. When I ran our program description through a Wordle application online, this is what came up, which was pretty interesting to me because learning is at the heart of it. It includes teachers and students, curriculum and coaching. Our instructional coach program is really about increasing the learning for students and supporting teachers along the way. But instructional coaching is not new. It may be relatively new to Maine, although there are some districts, we belong to a coaching co-op, and there are some districts who've had instructional coaches for over ten years. Nationally, there are reading coaches, about twenty-seven percent, math coaches, eighteen percent, and general instructional coaches, about a quarter of the districts across the country as of the survey done in 2015, 16 reports. One of the advantages of coaches is it maximizes the return on investment to workshops. One of the pieces that got us going and got us intrigued in the notion of instructional coaches is that this data, this research that was done in 1986 indicates what we know, that when we send people off to conferences, they well may gather some information, they may even be presented with theory, they may even be provided a demonstration, they may even get to practice that at the workshop a little bit, but when they come back, if they don't get feedback, and you'll see knowledge information, skill, and transfer of the actual training, it has a very little effect. When you add coaching, sustained instructional coaching to that, it lifts the effect size to over one point six eight in terms of the transfer of learning on the part of teachers. So here in Scarborough, we wanted to make sure that our coaching program had focus and was lined up to our vision for continuous improvement. So they really focus on two aspects of the four themes, the one around effective teaching and learning, and safe and inclusive schools. That's their focus. We have in the district a process by which when we set our own goals for improvement for ourselves, we ask the essential question, what do my students, as classroom teachers, what do my students need me to get better at? And so as a leader, what do my leaders need to get better at? So we also establish some givens around this thing called coaching. The expectation in the given is that all teachers strive to improve their practice. We know that. Good teachers are good learners. Teachers are also the most important factor at improving student learning. Also, providing teachers at the point closest to the interaction with their student is the leverage point for increasing that student achievement. And what instructional coaches actually do is they help teachers be successful in improving their practice, and they do that in lots of different ways. So our instructional coaches are really, their focus is twofold. One is the curriculum coordination, the second is really around promoting instructional quality, and that is all around improving the learning for students. So they serve as, they don't go in the classroom and tell teachers what to do. We know that is not good practice. They serve as thinking partners, they work in collaboration with teachers. So much of their work is building relationships with teachers so that there's a trusting relationship there and they work together. So there's a lot of choice and there's a lot of meeting teachers where they're at. There's also the curriculum coordination, they also work at professional development programming, and they also serve the function to pinch-hit, and I'll give you some examples of how they have pitched, been pitch-hitting in the buildings. Who they are this year, and this has shifted over time. At K-2, there are three, and they generally cover the areas of literacy, mathematics, and technology, but they also support other initiatives at the K-2 phase level. And they all work together across content areas. For example, at K-2, they've been working together at doing some integrative units that address science and social studies and STEM as well. Three-five, we have three instructional coaches, quite similar to K-2. Six-eight, we moved to a humanities, sciences format, so they, those, we have those three coaches, two of the coaches cover all the humanities and all the sciences. So Kara works with the science teachers, also works with the math teachers as well as the STEM teachers. At nine-twelve, given the schedules and the resources available, we have two instructional coaches. Michelle Shoup came to us, she's part-time Latin, and she's also a part-time instructional coach. Jen Adams is a technology instructional coach, and she's full-time coaching. One of the things that we started this year after some training was what are called student-centered coaching cycles. And this is a way to focus the work on the students. So what a student-centered coaching cycle is, the teacher and the instructional coach meet together, they identify the goals for students, teachers generally know what their goals are for their students, they might work on developing some pre-assessments. It all depends on what the teacher needs. They work on the pre-assessments, and then they begin to design the instructional units or adjust the instructional units or try out the instructional units. And they then go into a phase where, and we talk about light coaching cycles or heavy coaching cycles, sometimes it's just a consult, other times it's more heavy where the teacher and the coach co-plan the lesson, or the coach is modeling the lesson in the classroom or supporting the teacher with different groups of students in the classroom. It all depends on the needs of the teachers. Then the next stage is they do have a post-meeting where they talk about how that lesson went. And it's not a situation where the coach is telling the teacher what went well and what didn't go well, it's that thinking partner, partner routine where they're side-by-side. What did you think about the lesson? How did you see the lesson going? What do you notice about the students? Let's look at the student data. So the focus is all around the students and their learning, and then the conversation shifts to, okay, what next for these students? Which students do you think really got it? Which students didn't get it? How do we adjust for that? I've got some ideas, would you like some ideas? Yeah, let's try some ideas. Could you put some things together for me? Yes, I can put some things together for you and bring them to the next class. So that's just a little example of what that coaching cycle looks like. But there are roles for coaches. We were, the National Staff Development Council has a coaches academy, and they support development of instructional coaches, so we've used their resources. So they're certainly a classroom supporter where they model effective instructional strategies and they co-plan and they co-teach, but they're also a data coach because they're focused on the data around the students. Are the students learning? To what extent? If a student doesn't get it, what do they go, what do we do next? There are also resource providers. One of the best ways to develop a trusting relationship with teachers is asking them for what they need and then finding the resources to get it. It can be stuff, it can be organizing materials for the teachers, it can also be access to websites and lesson plans and assessments and resources. They're also a curriculum specialist. Doesn't mean that they're content experts, it means that they help facilitate the curriculum process, and we have a online curriculum guide that they're working with classroom teachers at developing units and refining those units so they can be shared across the district. And lastly, another big role is to be mentors to new teachers. We have new teachers who are brand-new to the profession as well as the district, and we have teachers who are new to the districts. They support those teachers in learning our curriculum, our instructional methodologies that are effective, getting them the resources they need, helping them in supporting the classroom and getting used to the new school, along with other supports that teachers have as they're new. They're also that instructional specialist. They know what adult learning looks like and how it can be effective for teachers so that we do not have to send teachers out to workshops. So what have they been doing this year? They do a lot, and so coming to some descriptions around that was challenging as we worked together. At K-2, and every phase level is in a different place depending on what's going on with the building and what their goals are, at K-2, they've been involved, there are, those three staff persons have been involved in over forty heavy coaching cycles in which they have an ongoing relationship with classroom teachers at the K-2 and are working within classrooms, but then more than forty light coaching cycles where it may be just a consult, it may be just a conversation. There are also learning facilities. They plan the curriculum meetings that happen after school, those ninety-minute curriculum meetings. They're also involved in leveraging STEM education, Talk Boos is an instructional strategy. They also provide literacy workshops for the teachers, and they coordinated the bar harm professional learning. There are also resource providers. They support teachers with all those materials, assessments, activities on a, on request basis. When I first asked them that I wanted to track some of this data around their interactions, they were dumbfounded because they might have seventy, eighty interactions, whether it's email, personal conversations during the day on the fly with the teachers as they're going about their work in a building. They're also involved in RTI intervention planning, so they may meet in a response to intervention where the problem's solving what works for a child, they might have some ideas for either the students or the academic support, my, teacher might have some ideas for students, and then they might help support the classroom teacher in providing that service to the students. In the area of instruction and support, they assist in larger classrooms, they might pull some kids aside to do some, some little groups, they might do some flexible group enrichment. They've also covered classrooms in a pinch when substitutes couldn't be found, and they've also covered duties at K-2. At three-five, at the Wentworth School, this past year was a little bit of an anomaly. They've been involved in more than seventy-five light coaching sessions because the instructional coaches were needed to help support a classroom in which we had a long-term substitution. We were unable to find sufficient long-term subs, so two of the three instructional coaches were actually providing instruction to students in the classroom. Other pieces at three-five, they also do the curriculum meetings, they assist in training for Google, they've been running literacy workshops, the district, they also help coordinate the district testing that takes place, and also in interpreting the data with the teachers. They're also involved in intervention planning and new teacher support. The other piece that happens at Wentworth is that what they found is when we have students transferring into the district, they don't understand the language of our curriculum, and in some cases they're not up to speed with our curriculum. They don't necessarily need an academic intervention per se, but they do need some lessons to help scaffold them so that they can understand what's going on in the classrooms. So the instructional coaches will provide that temporary service as well. At the middle school, the three instructional coaches have been involved in the coaching cycles as well, they're doing seven heavy and eleven light to medium, but they also have, because the teachers at the middle school have team time, they're also involved in what are called, what the middle school calls content meetings, which is really working on the curriculum units, planning those lessons, activities, having those discussions. And at the middle school, they're working on helping the teams facilitate themselves to accomplish the work and providing them with ways in which they can have those conversations so it isn't always dependent on an instructional coach. They also are a resource providing, provider in terms of district testing coordination. One of those coaches, the technology coach, is also a part-time social studies teacher there, but they've also assisted with state testing coordination, which is kind of an all-hands-on-deck situation when we're involved there. They've also done some small group instruction for writing. And lastly, at the high school, the two instructional coaches, one was on maternity leave from September through December, and the other instructional coach is a part-time Latin teacher, is four-tenths Latin, but they've been heavily involved in the student-centered coaching, and they use the, our teacher growth and evaluation model has, and teachers need to do this, what's called a student learning objective, where the teachers need to provide sort of pre-assessment data on their students, they instruct, they provide their instruction, and then they do some posts. This is a new practice for teachers at the high school, but it fit very well with the student-centered coaching cycle because that's essentially what it does, how our coaches can support teachers there. So they took part, the teachers at the high school really stepped up and accessed the coaches for that support. This is just some feedback from teachers from exit slips. The coaches are very good about providing exit slips with everything that they do because they use those exit slips, and they use the feedback that they get to then plan future meetings and, particularly curriculum meetings, content meetings, even teacher design meetings are also involved in PLT meetings on late start Wednesdays. So there was a notion that our professional development funding over time decreased when we started with the coaching. In fact, it actually increased, and only in the past two years has it decreased, and this funding I took from allocated professional development time, allocated professional development lines at the schools and curriculum. There are other professional development lines as well in the budget. So in terms of a cost comparison, when we look at our regional consultants, they range anywhere from, on a per-day basis, from about eleven hundred dollars to twenty-four hundred dollars per day if we want someone to come in for the day. So that puts them at about a hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars per hour. When I did, took a look, Kate gave me the information about salaries and benefits for our coaches, and I looked at it by phase level, it ranged from fifty-one to sixty-six dollars per hour. So in terms of delivering that professional development and developing those relationships with those teachers to improve instruction, it's a great savings to have the instructional coaches onboard. The other qualitative value added, and I don't know how to quantify that, is when they're being asked to pinch-hit, they know the curriculum, they know the teachers, they're familiar with the students, and they know those school routines. So a principal can use those folks to help out in situations where we would not have to hire a full-day sub for a part-time activity. But also, it minimizes our need to hire outside consultants or send teachers off to workshops all the time. We will generally try and send either a teacher and/or a coach to come back and co-plan and then deliver to teachers. And then more currently, I'm trying to keep up with the research, current research on coaching as it is spreading, there are probably about thirty to forty districts across the state that also have instructional coaches, so we're not new or unique. But one of the pieces which we've certainly found true is to have a purpose and a goal for coaches. And every fall, we bring the program description to the principals at the leadership council, and we have a conversation. What are the priorities this year? What are the goals? How can the coaches help out? And we tweak that program description as a result. And the student-centered coaching piece and having coaches be more involved in the classrooms was certainly a piece, so we pulled a research-based model and are working on implementing that this year. This is just a little graphic about instructional coaching across the country, just a general description overall, and that's it. Twenty-two minutes. Thank you. Now, I'm happy to entertain questions on this, I know I just gave you a lot of information.
Start. Thank you for doing that, appreciate it. Do you, and you might have touched upon this at the very end there, but do you have any, I guess, how do you measure and quantify success with the program? Like, do you do any surveys with the teacher? Do you look at, do correlations with students, you know, grades and progress?
Yeah, that's one of the pieces that we are building along the way because there are so many variables. I don't want to only use the state assessments and their role. It's hard to quantify whether or not that's a direct result of the instructional coaches. One of the pieces that they do, that they look at those pieces is, is via the exit slips in terms of the teacher's feedback from the activities that are going on, and also a, they're also working on putting together something more comprehensive. The other piece is within the student-centered coaching model, there is a document that the , that the coaches use with the teachers where we have our pre-assessment data and our post-assessment data. We're just working on that now, and one of the things that we do, what we plan to do because this is a new model, is to compile that information so that we can summarize that information. But because we're just starting out and some of the coaches were teaching, we haven't coordinated that effort yet, we do have a program goal around student-centered coaching where there'll be a certain percentage numbers of coaching that takes place at each building with an improvement in student learning. So we do want to look at that outcome. In this year, we just wanted it connected, so we're going to get some baseline information after this first year, and I'd be happy to report back on that from those coaching cycles.
And just, I guess, more anecdotally for the exit slips, so there's only, I'm sure you have a lot of them, so thank you for not putting them all in here, but just generally, do those trend more to positive or constructive?
Yeah, generally the feedback is positive. We also look for feedback on what our next steps or adjustments coaches can make, so it's a moving picture in terms of what's provided. The other part of the instructional coaching picture that's important to understand is that sometimes instructional coaches are portrayed as change agents, and so sometimes there is pushback on coaching and coaches because that, I call it organizational resistance to change, and that's why we've been very, very careful that our instructional coaches are not involved in the teacher evaluation process, they're not evaluative in any way, and we focus on building trusting relationships with teachers because we want to establish a community of learners and support for teachers, not assessing or evaluating those. And that's why we focus, we're going to be focusing on the student performance as a result of the coaching. So that is, sometimes we will get pushback on some things that the coaches are doing, and that's where the principals play an important role. They help roll out whatever the initiative or the coaching activities are for the coming year because it's a, this is where we're going. Generally, it's based on feedback, for example, at the K-5, the writing, it's the writing goal. So a lot of the energy and the efforts this year, particularly at K-5, is in and around the writing. So Anne Marie and Courtney and Peggy have been working with the classroom teachers around that, the writing, the assessments, also calibrating with the teachers, having the teachers have conversations, okay, if the score is here, where do we go next? Those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
So is participation voluntary? It depends. The curriculum meetings are required in the afternoon. What we try and do is try to build something that works for everyone, and that's why that feedback to design, lots of times they'll design little mini workshops or have teachers sharing their strategies. So those are not, but when we offer, the coaches will offer summer workshops based on the interest of teachers, and those are voluntary. What about the more individualized assistance? Right now, we're looking at it as a, an attraction piece, model piece. If a principal has, might have concerns about a teacher or sees a potential growth opportunity for a teacher who isn't necessarily reaching out to the coaches, they might suggest that they do. But we're looking at it as a, an asset-based model where we want to build on people's strengths. Do you have any idea the number of teachers that the coaches have individually assisted at that school? Well, they have connected with, either via their communicate, they also have communication and resources they put out, they have coaches' corners, they include information and weekly updates and things, so it depends on what kind of interaction or what level of interaction they've had. We have some teachers who would love to use them all the time, and we have some teachers who are pretty independent and are, nope, I'm fine, kind of thing, but they're always checking in with, they try and check in, their goal is to check in with every single teacher and build a relationship with every single teacher. So the degree of interaction would vary. Who is the supervisor of the instructional coaches? I co-supervise the instructional coaches with the building principals. Every month, I meet with the instructional coaches and the building principals, excuse me, to talk about what's been happening, what the successes are, what the challenges are, and what the planning is moving forward. So they set, the coaches set an outcome for themselves, which is aligned to the building goals for the work at the building, but they also set a leadership outcome for themselves so they're building their coaching skills. Okay, thank you.
Monique, are each of the instructional coaches also certified to teach? Have you found, so I think that there's a little bit of a, an odd dynamic happening, and I'm just going to put this out there, and it might just be me. We've actually, as a board, gotten some negative feedback about the instructional coaches. And so I think partially what we're trying to do is reconcile some of the negative feedback that we get to better understand their role and maybe where some of that negative feedback would be coming from. And so do you find that different models work better at different phase levels? For example, I know it's difficult to imagine a hybrid situation where an instructional coach would also be a teacher at a lower phase level because those teachers are with their same group of kids all day long as opposed to a high school where there's a little bit more flexibility in their day?
Yeah, yeah. The longer an instructional coach is out of the classroom, the more at risk they are of being, being seen as less credible, excuse me, because they're not speaking from experience or recent experience. But a lot of the coaching pieces isn't about telling the teacher about their own practice, it's really learning how to coach someone side-by-side. So yes, there could be some, and there could be some places where we might make some improvements. Excuse me, K-5 is a challenge because of that schedule, and we've often thought about what we could do around that, but we haven't come up with anything yet. Excuse me, I'm going to have to step out.
I think too, April, a common, not just specific in Scarborough, but generally with the coaching role, a common challenge is that often they're perceived as like an extension of administration when in fact they're not, and we work really, really hard to ensure that that's, like Monique talked about, that they don't evaluate, they don't report what Alicia needs to work on and practice to the principal or to Monique. It's more generally about the structure of support, but I think that's for some teachers, they still, they see instructional coaches as an extension of administration, and that can be challenging both for the coaches and for the teachers who we're trying to coach into.
I'll be back, I promise. I just need to scratch my coat with a little bit of coffee.
Julie, you may be able to answer this. So the, so Monique said that the instructional coaches don't participate in the teacher evaluations, but does that reverse, or do the teachers participate in the instructional coaches' evaluations?
No. So the, instructional coaches are treated like a teacher. They are teachers, they're certified teachers, so they get evaluated by their principal and Monique, but they don't evaluate other teachers. And so teachers don't evaluate formally in the evaluation system instructional coaches because they're colleagues, they're peers. They're actually peers in our organizational structure, but they do give feedback in a variety of ways, through exit slips, and I think there's certain times in the year where Monique might do like a survey generally about the quality of coaching. about the quality of coaching or what they need from coaches. Or in the context of, at the end of a curriculum meeting, how effective was this session or whatever? Does that make sense?
It makes, I understand it. Yes.
But there's no, that would be like the equivalent of one principal evaluating another principal. And so we don't, teachers don't evaluate each other partly because they're in their classrooms teaching. They don't see each other teach as often. But one of our goals is to create more of a feedback cycle where even a classroom teacher is getting into another classroom teacher's room to see instruction, effective instruction happening, but not in a evaluative way.
I have two questions. My understanding with lead teachers is that they also do mentoring. How does that work if there are two mentors with a teacher, which is considered the primary person that would work with somebody who is new?
So coaching is different than mentoring. So coaching is specific to the practice where mentoring is more like specific to you as a person. Like, are you having work-life balance? You know, do you know where your lunch goes? Like, some of those kind of basic things for new staff. Could a person have, could a person, could a teacher be being coached by an instructional coach and have a mentor at the same time? Yes, but they have really different roles and responsibilities. And so the lead teachers, I don't know that they're formal. I think, I think our goal is that everybody's a mentor to everybody at some point, but I don't know that that's a core responsibility for lead teachers.
I'm going to hop over here and grab a mic.
My other question.
Can I just throw one more thought in there? Because I know that one of the labels in our budget is lead teachers, mentors, something, stipends. There are actually a group of teachers who we label as certification mentors, and their job is very specific, which is to help teachers who are on the certification cycle complete their paperwork, make sure that they have their plan in place. And there's one of those at each phase. And then there's a central district group and they meet together. So when it says mentors in the budget description, that's actually the mentors that we're talking about.
Certification.
Certification mentors, and they're a piece of that budget line because they have a specific little stipend for that.
Great, thank you.
Oh, so now I pick up what you're asking now. Two different jobs.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't clear in the way that the presentation had come through.
Well, and I realized that in the budget line, it was confusing the issue because there were several different roles embedded in that one stipend line or that group of stipend lines.
The other question I have is at like the middle school, the high school level where they get more concentrated in specific classes. How does that work for a coach to go in if their core is humanities into the sciences to do a classroom teaching?
A coach helps a teacher think about their practice. They don't need to have the content knowledge background. Certainly, our coaches feel more comfortable if they do. And so, for example, Michelle Shook was working with teachers on these SLOs. And so she had, one of the pieces around this process is identifying your pre-assessment and then some formative assessment strategies. So she found an, a resource which had over 60 different ideas for formative assessment activities that teachers could use irregardless of the content area. So she was sharing tools that cross all content areas. If teachers have specific questions about their content area and the instructional methodology and content area, particularly at middle school and high school, they would rely on their team for that, the other content area experts.
And that kind of spurred another question. So when the teachers have their meetings, like department meetings, are the coaches part of that to be included in the best practices and methodologies? Or is it separate from what happens with their, in their departments?
Well, what will happen within the department meetings is a department head might ask the coach to come and have a conversation depending on the topic that's going on. Or if the coach, for example, Michelle wanted to offer this SLO piece with some examples, and so she worked with a few individual teachers, but then she asked the department heads if she could come and share at a department meeting. So she gets on their agendas that way. Middle school and the content areas, it was a school-wide expectation that they were going to have these meetings and these were the tasks that were going to happen. That gets established, I think, at the leadership level at the middle school, and then the coaches are there in a supporting role.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it gets a little tricky because we have, there's, I, I don't want to talk individually about any of our instructional coaches because I'm sure that as professionals, they are all fantastic.
They are.
We have, we have two at the high school, one of whom is doing like a hybrid where she's in it, she's teaching and then she's also doing the coaching. The other instructional coach you have listed under technology. Don't we have a deficit in our math, technology program, science, technology program up at the high school where she could be doing something similar? Teaching, teaching at least a couple of sections of class and coaching?
So she is actually going to teach a section next year. She's going to teach the adulting course. But it's about, at the high school, it's certification-driven. So what we're asking for, I think, if I'm hearing you correctly, in terms of the new STEM teacher, is actually to bring on board specifically someone with an engineering background because that's a gap that we have currently. And there's some new survey courses that folks, that the high school wants to offer based on student needs and industry expectations and things like that. And we wouldn't currently have enough staff in order to do that. The, and correct me if I'm wrong, Monique, but the technology coaches really play a critical role in making sure that this doesn't become a fancy pencil and that we're actually integrating technology in a really high-quality way so that we work differently and more efficiently and effectively and not just, you know, replacing paper and pencil with the technology.
Yes, and she is also working on expanding the Makerspace notion in the Learning Commons. She also carries an advisee group as well in the high school. She also works at helping high school students navigate shifting all of their Google files and folders over as they transition out of high school. She helps out with the freshman students as well. So while it's not a class, she has interactions and she supports that work, so that doesn't have to come out of class time.
And I think we would all argue that the high school does not have enough coaching support.
Monique, wouldn't you agree that in the beginning of the development of instructional coaches, there was a lot of time spent talking about the high school because we already have department heads who are presumably content area experts? And there was, there was some, there was some overlap there. I wouldn't argue that we have all the resources we need there because there are many different roles that those leads play, department heads play, but it was part of the conversation initially, which is why you see it more front-loaded at the lower grades.
Yes, we've had lots of conversation about, could we leverage the lead teachers at the buildings or use their time that they have? Where we landed on this model, and this model has grown and shifted over time, is that with the lead teachers, there just wasn't enough time in the day. And then certainly at the K-5, we had that sort of, how do you do a part-time kind of a situation? Because they're not compartmentalized in classes. And that's where we landed on this. The principals were not willing to give up their lead teacher times because of the roles that the lead teachers play in just helping manage the buildings moving forward. And so now, in some respects, they also have instructional coaches helping out with some of those pieces as well.
And also at the high school level, the department heads, we've really been talking and working to try to shift the role of the department head to be more that of a content-specific coach, and they receive this time, so they teach one less section than their colleagues in the department as part of that role, plus receive a stipend. Where at the other phase levels, there isn't that type of flexibility to be able to release. Even the lead teachers don't have release time at the K-A level.
So it becomes hard to support any lead teacher with some, you know, the skills, knowledge, strategies that they might need as leaders, even in working with their colleagues, finding the time to develop teachers who are interested in more leadership, taking on more leadership roles. That's an ongoing challenge.
I don't have any more questions. I don't know if either of you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monique.
While Monique's here, do you have any curriculum and instruction-related budget questions that you'd like clarification on or specific line items? Before we let her go rest?
There were a whole lot of software. I don't know if it's called systems or what, but soft, there was a lot of software identified as part of the online contracted services. And I don't want to eat up a lot of time, but I didn't know what a lot of them were. Can you just sort of outline?
Sure. Some of those are what I might refer to as productivity pieces. So for example, the software that is called Enriching Students is used at the high school and the middle school. I can typically negotiate a better cost if I do a cross-phase level. Typically, most of mine are instructional, but that one, for example, is a productivity piece of software that rests within my budget. And what that is used for is for students to schedule or tag help and extra help with their teachers in the schools. Other software, for example, with the overhead projectors comes software that comes with the overhead projector. We call it Smart Notebook, so there are lesson plans embedded in those pieces. That's another piece, an example of software. Another piece of software we have is called Google Read and Write, which is, it's an extension, but we pay for that, which allows students, it's a reader, it's an online reader, and it allows text help. It also translates text, so we make that available to all students. And what are instructional pieces of software? We have, we need a solution for video editing, so we have video editing software there. We have PairDeck, which is our formative feedback piece that gets embedded into instructional PowerPoints. We have a couple of subscriptions in that line. One new request is a piece of software called Seesaw, which will allow the K-2 parents to be able to see their students' works. April is nodding because I think probably your teacher uses that. It's a great way to communicate. We've been doing the free version. We want to be able to expand that opportunity so that all teachers can, at the K-2 level, can better communicate the work that students are doing at school at home. Those are just some little examples.
What's the, can you talk more, there's one in there, the Universal Screener, that was pretty significant.
That is our district-wide assessment. I didn't put a particular vendor name in there because we're still in the process of deciding on a new vendor. So it's referred to as, that cost is significant. We also have, we also, out of that line, we also fund the PSATs for our sophomores and juniors, and that comes out of that line as well. That's that college board piece.
Do you want to mention about the Universal Screener and the fact that we're transitioning from one product to another?
Yeah, we have been using a product, our vendor is Renaissance. It's called the STAR testing. We're going to be transitioning to either the NWEA or the iReady, and I'm in the process of getting price quotes. It's going to fit within that ballpark. We just won't contract for anything additional.
And are there costs associated with that migration?
No.
Due to?
Time, well, due to just time. I mean, Phil Calick and our information specialist will be doing all the rostering on that. We won't be importing any old data. The data that we have has been imported into our data analytics software already. So we'll just start fresh.
Sorry, just a clarification. So the Universal Screener, I, this is 29,000?
Yep.
You said the PSATs is a part of that? So does that make?
No, no, it's a part of that cost center. Sorry, it's separate. It's separate.
What's the Improvement Strategist position?
The Improvement Strategist position is a position that really helps us with utilizing, analyzing, and making good decisions on our data. So she has been working on that data-wise process and making sure that everyone is following that so that we're making good decisions with the data we have. She's also been working with me and with the information specialist at our data management map in terms of what data is available, what sources it can be found in, how we can access that, how we can streamline those piece of things. So she works, she provides workshops for teachers on the process. She also is involved with the needs assessment, the comprehensive needs assessment that we've been doing. She's been running, coordinating those meetings. She works with me on the ESSA grant as a result of that. So she's been very helpful doing those things that I just was not able to do.
Another title you could use for her role is data specialist. Or she also is our attendance officer and dropout prevention coordinator. So she really has, she also coaches the principals in building this continuous improvement process across the district, which is our district goal number one. We've been collecting a ton of data for a number of years, and I say it goes into like the black hole of data. So we have more data than we know what to do with, and she's really playing a critical role in extracting that data, creating data overview so that it's usable for principals and teachers to really make sure that we're making evidence-based decisions.
Do you have a link? Do you guys have any?
Nope, I'm okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Go somewhere and talk.
You're welcome to go if you'd like.
But if you have questions, you know where to find me.
Thanks, Monique.
Thank you.
Okay, any other follow-up questions on the previous board questions? Just the budget in general?
I have one for you. It was just related to the ed tech question. The proportionality of the benefits and the wages. And I think your response was because we've adjusted where the ed techs are based on the need. Is that, but are the benefits still high because they are taking more benefits? Is that, like, what's the reason behind that?
Yeah, so the benefits are really specific to the person. And so Kate and I can do the exact same job. She might be in one building, I might be in another. Next year, we might switch positions. Kate maybe takes full benefits, I take no benefits. That's going to cause some disproportionality, plus where folks are in terms of their pay scale. Will plays a role in that too.
I think one of the other things that Julie and I talked about as we were looking through the items, the budget, line items to sort of see what people were thinking about, what people were looking at is, in some cases, the way that our general ledger system is built, we've got like 600 different expenditure accounts. Some of those accounts might have one person in them or two people in them. So when you're looking at percent changes, the dollar amount may be not all that significant, but it might be like a hundred percent increase in their, in their line. And that can be just as simple, I was looking at one line at the middle school. We had a gentleman who was a building ed tech at the middle school last year who didn't take benefits and was at the bottom of the scale. He resigned. We hired a new person. That new person was a little bit higher on the wage scale and had family benefits. So it's, it's a question of proportionality, as you said, to, to the size of the line to begin with. And you don't see those kind of shifts so much in the teacher lines because in most teacher lines, you've got at least 20 people. And in most of the ed tech lines, many of the ed tech lines, you may have two, three, one person. Support staff in general has that problem.
The other thing to know is that we base these, this budget proposal is based on current staff. And so then if something changes, if we know that an ed tech's not returning next year, you'll see adjustments by second reading in some of these lines based on that.
Right, and it kind of goes to the great big cycle of life, what's the song? Circle of Life that we operate with as a finance committee because you know at the end of the fiscal year, I'm going to be coming to you and saying, hey, we need to do a budget transfer to cover this. And so many times, it's a benefit line because of those, you know, you could have a $10,000 shift in a benefit line very easily just by someone leaving. And so many times, it's a benefit line because of those, you know, you could have a ten thousand dollar shift in a benefit line very easily just by someone leaving and a new person coming onboard. I don't bring it to you if it goes the other way. Were there other things on our chart here that you want to?
I'm going to F A Q.
Cool.
Can you? Sorry, do you have?
Nope.
Kate, before we dive into, I guess, do you want to just let us know what we're looking at here and sort of explain?
Yeah, does everybody have one of these?
Yes.
So.
Want some copy of this?
So what I've done here is, this is a tool that we invented a year or two ago to kind of help us track the progress that we make between first and second reading. And Julie likes the one that I had from two years ago because it goes on to like eleven by seventeen paper, and it's really exciting. It has a lot of movement on it. Last year's was a little less exciting because it was the same numbers and it fit on a shorter piece of paper. So what you have at the top is what our budget proposal looks like at first reading. And it's a little complicated because I wanted to outline the different funds, because general fund, adult education, school nutrition, and the capital budget all have some kind of impact on the tax request that the school is making to the town. So at the top grid, you've got sort of a complex little chart that says, here are all the different pieces of the school budget, what it looked like approved in FY nineteen, what we're asking for in FY twenty, and the change. And then the second chunk on that chart is your non-tax revenues for each one of those individual funds. So the last line then is your education net budget. And because the conversation that we've been having in the last couple of weeks is about what's the impact on the tax increase, I'm, I figure the net budget is kind of the thing that we care most about right now. And so I've set it up this way, and then the, the middle section of this, that's in blue with yellow and green and all these cheery colors. There are two parts to that. The first piece is leadership council updates on items in motion. And you remember, you hear us saying ad nauseam that there are things that we don't know when we come out at first reading, and there are going to be changes that will take place between the first reading and the second reading that aren't really decision points. They're stuff that happens to us, and we react to it and we make adjustments. So the numbers that I've filled in are numbers that we actually know now. The changes that I've heard of or learned of that are going to impact our bottom line. The yellow blocks are things that I, I still don't know for sure, but I think they might move. And we don't have strong numbers to put in there, but they're things that we're still discussing as a leadership team. Then the second block I've labeled as school board finance committee discussion slash decision points. And this is an area that I think we'll be expanding on in this conversation and then also going forward where you folks are coming up and saying, you know, I'd really like to talk about, for example, unified basketball. We need to get that into the budget. How is that going to look? How are we going to make that happen? There are a couple of other things that I plugged in there as sort of placeholders, but that, I, that's really just our, our working space going forward for what this group wants.
Kate, why does that say six twenty-six after unified basketball?
Because that is the net increase to the budget, and I have a piece of paper about that, which I'll hand out.
Okay.
Minus the grant?
No.
It's seventy-one twenty-six, minus four thousand, minus the grant.
Okay.
What's the four thousand?
Four thousand is the money that was budgeted for professional development in athletics and activities, which they're going to defer and move that over and use that as funding for the unified basketball.
It all makes sense now.
I have a, a little worksheet on that.
Well, now we've spoiled your worksheet. We gave away the ending.
The worksheet, you now know the punchline to the joke, right? The, the last blue section is the capital budget, which is something that Julie might help us sort of talk through a little bit. And then the bottom line is your adjusted budget proposal, and I kind of squished that up a little bit, so you're just seeing the gross and then the non-tax revenues and the net total gross. So this is, I hope, a useful tool for us. My thought was that as we speak and as we talk about what the, the will of the board and the finance committee might be, then I can take some notes and say, well, that, if we do that, then we will land here. And, you know, just try and capture those thoughts as we go along.
Kate, this includes all the investments, right?
It includes all the investments above the red line in this first block. This is what was presented at first reading.
Kate, before we jump into specific discussion, could you explain the change, the increase between school capital non-tax revenues at first reading and school capital non-tax revenues as listed on page two?
Yep, if you look at page two at the top, and this is obviously, none of this is decided specifically unless it's things that I've put that, you know, are at the top of the page that are things that we should just go ahead and do. But one of the proposals that Tom Hall and Julie came up with after the first reading was a conversation that included a lot of talk about capital projects. And the difference in the school capital non-tax revenues is forty-five thousand dollars, which the town manager has proposed to bond forty-five thousand dollars instead of asking for tax dollars for that. Sorry, that was a terrible sentence. In the original proposal, in the school capital budget, we had a forty-five thousand dollar vehicle, and it was slated to be appropriated funds. And so now the proposal is changed, and those funds are expected to be financed, or that vehicle is expected to be financed, which means that it doesn't have a direct impact on the bottom line tax. So that's why that yellow school capital non-tax revenues has changed. And if you look at the difference between that and the first reading. No, the revenues are higher because you're getting bond, you're getting bond revenues. Yeah, and that's the only item on here that's actually a revenue shift, because it's a difference in how you're financing, how you're funding. The expenditure. Everything else that we're looking at right here is a discussion about reducing expenditures. So format-wise, does this make sense? I mean, it's obviously, it's, it's just a tool. It's something that we can use to sort of track our progress and, and figure out what it is that we're, we're trying to, trying to achieve. I do have, since we got onto the subject of our friend here to fight basketball, I do have a little document that I made here, and I have extras of these, gentlemen, if you want to grab hold of anything. Pass this down. What I've done on this chart is just to simplify a number of conversations, a number of, you know, different meetings, and, you know, a whole new process of, of grant application and all kinds of good things. Into one chart, which basically says, what was the original proposal for unified basketball? That's the first column, traditional sports program cost estimate. And then where are we now? What do, what do we think we can, how much money do we think it will take us to effectively put on this program? So the context of this piece is that traditional sports program cost estimate of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, there's been a lot of folks saying, well, we, it doesn't really need to cost that much money. Why would you put that amount in your budget? And the short answer to that is that we costed that out, Mike and I, as, as we would cost out any sports program that we're offering, M P A sanctioned varsity-level high school sports program. Which means using the stipend rubric that's in the teacher contract to develop the stipends, which you can see from column one to column two is quite a difference. And then some of the other costs that we would expect to have to field an entirely new program at a high school sports level. The second column is after much conversation deliberation, can we do things differently with this particular club or sport because it's a different model, because it's not the same as, as a regular? It is still considered M P A sanctioned, but it's a very different model from a traditional varsity sport. So step one was to come up with a lower price tag, and step two was to talk about where's the money going to come from. And so at the bottom of the page, you'll see the reallocating funds budget for FY twenty P D. The four thousand dollars was in Mike's budget to kickstart his coaching accreditation.
National certification.
Sort of certification, thank you. And so we, we've said, well, we'll defer that, and we'll move the money into the unified basketball expenses. And then the grant funds, I don't know where you folks are on what you've heard about that process, but Mike did make an application to Special Olympics, and he's been, what's the phrase? Ninety-nine percent sure that, that they are going to give us a grant next year, and that it would be in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. So the six twenty-six that you see on my little fancy colored chart is the net cost, the amount that we would need to increase our operating budget in order to make this happen. Thoughts about that?
No questions for me.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, so why, why don't we continue on athletics since we're in that comp, that arena? And Kate, can you talk a little bit about the famous scoreboard request?
I will gladly talk about the famous scoreboard request. Does everybody have a, a capital budget in your book? This is the same thing that we handed out a few million times.
Need one?
So I think what, what, what sent a few folks off the rails. Here. You need another one? I've got, I've got a little pile on me.
That's it, I just need, I'll take another one.
I think what, what caused a bit of consternation is actually one hundred percent my fault, because the words that I put into our capital improvement budget led people to believe that the reason that we wanted to do this project was because of shot clocks that were required by the M P A, which in fact is not the case. We know that the M P A has been considering using shot clocks, but that they have decided that that's not going to be a requirement for public schools in Maine because of the expenditure. So I want to take three steps back and talk about the process by which this capital budget was built. What happens is that Todd and I, going through the facility section of the budget, will take requests and proposals from every department, every school, all the principals and department heads. And Todd and I will spend a couple of hours going through those proposals and trying to winnow them down, decide what's nice to have, what we absolutely need to do, and how would be the best way to do it. And remember that we're also looking at a five-year capital plan when we're building these things, so we're saying, okay, well, if we do this this year, then next year it would make sense to do that. So when we looked at Mike's list of potential capital projects, he had a number of things on the list, and one of the things that he thought was a pressing need was the scoreboard in the plumber gym. He also said that at the same time, he talked to us about the score clock thing, or the shot clock thing. He talked to us about alumni gym and said that, you know, someday we will probably need to make changes there as well if this M P A situation moves forward. Todd and I looked at that and said, oh, well, if we need to replace the, the scoreboard in plumber gym.
Because it's failing.
Because it's failing, because it's older, because it has, I think they're LED lights that don't function, I forget exactly.
I don't know the specific type of bulb that it is, but each, you know how on a score clock, each number is made up of multiple light bulbs? It's very cost, in effect, it's very costly to replace those individual bulbs when they burn out.
All right, so we took the pressing need of plumber gym and said, okay, if we want to do scoreboards at the high school, we're going to need to engage an electrician. We're going to need to have a high-level scissor lift, which we're going to have to rent because they're going to have to go up and they're going to have to be, be working in the rafters. We're probably going to need an engineering study. We're going to need all of these things to make sure that this new scoreboard, these new scoreboards will work. If we're going to do it in plumber gym, it would be more cost-effective to do both at the same time, because we would have the material, we would have the equipment, we would have the specialists there all at once. So Todd and I looked at this proposal and said, okay, well, if we're going to do plumber gym and we need to do that, we should probably do alumni as well. That had nothing to do with Mike's request, and it had nothing to do with shot clocks. It had to do with us assessing what was on the list of facilities renovations or upgrades that was needed to be taken care of, where they would fit into that five-year plan, what would be the most rational and efficient way of doing that. So I apologize to Mike for turning it into some, he doesn't know what the M P A wants, conversation, because that's not really what it was. So on my blue chart, everybody's new favorite blue chart, what I would suggest is that we go back and defer the alumni gym scoreboard. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about the efficiencies of it. And, I mean, we could say, this group could say, we don't really want to do plumber gym either, but at the very least, we don't have to do alumni gym at the same time that we do plumber gym.
Is plumber gym used for games?
Yes, basketball principally.
For what, for what age group and?
So they do, they're more, more and more, they've been doing like double headers, so sometimes there's a game in alumni gym and in plumber gym at the same time.
Yeah, there's a lot of tournaments. I know the basketball's in there.
But isn't that only for like travel sports or something, not, not for our own schools?
No, the, they do use it for, community does use that gym, but they don't use our scoreboard and they don't use our sound system. That's just for school-sponsored activities.
So what school basketball games are occurring as double headers?
JV and varsity sometimes, or, like, they might have a, a JV game in one, in plumber gym and a varsity game in alumni, or I think if there's tournaments and things like that, they might be using both spaces.
Because I've only seen it with, you know, JV goes first and then varsity, and then when they're doing like a, a tournament, it would be like a travel that's in that gym.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure on the specific schedule of it, but that's, I do know for a fact that we only use it for school-sponsored events. We don't allow community to use that, the scoreboard or the sound system.
I was just taking a quick look here because I have a bunch of emails back and forth about plumber. The P E classes use plumber gym, youth basketball tournament, cheerleading invitational, summer basketball leagues, youth basketball tournament. And then he says that the, our athletic department is probably not the largest user of the clock and sound system in plumber. Double header games for winter season and fall volleyball would be the, our school-based sports that are in there.
Oh, I have some volleyball.
Yeah. I've seen cheering in there quite a bit as well, but I think that's practices rather than the competitions.
I don't think they use it. They use the sound system.
They don't need a scoreboard.
But we're talking about the sound system, not just the scoreboard.
The sound system is also in this budget, and so there's another line item on our capital, page two. Mike asked Ken Field, who's the sound system people, to go back and give us a more reduced scope of work and not to just replace exactly what's in there, but to do sort of a bare bones sound system upgrade for us. And came back with a, a smaller ask for that, just a reduced project basically, and said that they could get by with about half of what they had originally asked for. The original proposal was to replace the existing sound system with basically modern working versions of what, what they currently have.
Do you know how old the sound system is?
I don't know if I have that. Let's see.
I might have it here. Hold on.
What, I mean, what's the difference between the mic, microphone system and the sound system?
The microphone system, is that under the auditorium that you're looking, Alicia?
Oh, thank you.
The auditorium, yeah, that's, that's.
Sorry. Sorry.
That's the FCC doing us a favor by selling the wavelength that we just finished investing in, all of our wireless mic equipment.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. It's confusing.
Thank you. While Julie's looking for the information on the sound system, you had mentioned that it was a cost savings to do the lift and the electrician. So would it be less than forty thousand dollars if we defer one of the scoreboards?
I think it would be forty thousand dollars to do the first one, and then it might be a little bit more in an, in an ensuing year to do the second one, but what we would do is just go out and get a quote. If we, if we decide that that's the appropriate way to move forward to solve the plumber problem, but not solve the nonexistent, exactly, alumni problem, then we'll just get a new quote and then we would plug in a real number. One of the variables there in the, working in the gyms is the fact that the cinder block wall. And so if there's any additional wiring that needs to be done, it can get a little bit expensive because Donnie can't pull wires through cinder blocks very easily. So there's a little bit of money factored in there for electric, electrical work, which isn't necessarily, we don't have a quote for that yet, but we could get one.
Thank you.
So here I'm talking and I'm not taking notes, but I think what I need to do is just put a note about solidifying that cost.
For which one?
For the. The sound system isn't, is pretty much.
Yeah.
That's, that we do have a quote for.
Right.
So that one's, that one's okay, it's the scoreboard, it's the question of, is it really eighty thousand divided by two? Or is there savings one way or the other? Now you get to see my left-handed, one-handed typing. Which is super efficient.
So I'll just ask, are you guys okay with how it's currently laid out right now? So deferring the alumni scoreboard and the plumber gym sound system?
Do we have a quote on the scoreboard?
I think that's what Kate's saying.
She's taking a note of it.
Oh, I thought she said.
I think, no, we have a direct quote on the sound system, that's how we got the refined pricing.
I think Todd does have a quote on the scoreboard, but I don't think I have anything current about doing one versus two. So.
So potentially it could be a little bit more than forty.
Could be.
Okay, so I've captured that we're going to get a new quote on that. But if the, if the general concept is that that's kind of where we're headed, that we would do one and not the other, then we can, we can nail that right down. I don't want to speak for you guys, what do you think? And it can be, we get the right number in there and then we see where we are. I mean, none of this stuff is necessarily decided this minute, unless Sarah wants us to decide at this minute. We have, what, two whole weeks? Three weeks?
We got, we got so much, we got so much time.
I guess I'd love to know the necessity for the plumber scoreboard based on school athletic use. Because just for confirmation purposes, Julie, you said that the other entities don't use our scoreboard, right?
So I have, I requested data from community services and this is what's tricky about it. They reserve it for most events and then what the school department will do is block the gym out. Say like during the springtime, we may need to be in there for baseball, we may not. It just, so we'll block it out. So the data that we have isn't as pristine as I would want it to be to actually know what is the specific use. So it might say that the high school used plumber gym all this week and really nobody ever needed to go in there.
Because they were outside.
Because the weather was good. So what I, what I have here from the system that community services uses is rec track. And so they're able to go through and say like how many times it's been used, what are the fees that have been collected and things like that. But I haven't had a chance, I just got it, so I haven't had a chance to really, some things are highlighted in green and orange, so I don't totally know necessarily, but how to decipher this.
Because I'm assuming all we would need it for in plumber would be double headers for basketball and volleyball.
Right, because PE, you don't, you don't need a scoreboard.
Right, I think we're conflating a little bit the use of the gym with the use of the scoreboard.
Scoreboard.
Right.
Right. I mean, and the reality is it's a decision point. So it's, we can continue to replace bulbs as they fail and it's just a matter of at what point does something, does it become more cost efficient to get a newer, upgraded, more efficient piece of equipment or keep putting money into a failing piece? That's.
How much are they for to replace the bulbs?
I don't think I have the specific cost of that, but I can find out.
And how many need to be replaced?
Yep, how much to replace the bulbs?
Can we just use flip scores like we did back then?
Pay a guy a whole sign? All right, so we'll figure, we need to figure out what we're doing with scoreboards in general. Oh, and cost.
So the auditorium, Kate? That sound system is going to be unusable next year?
That's what I hear, yeah. I've got this information from Matt Eaton, who is the gentleman who kind of manages our AV stuff in the, in the auditorium. And what he sent me was a disclosure from the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, that basically said, we've sold the wavelength that your microphones operate on to another buyer, so you're not going to have access to them. And it's, I believe it's to do with cellular phones, that the cellular phone wavelengths are expanding and they're giving more space on the spectrum to them. And I'm probably using all the wrong words because this is so not my area of expertise. But the microphones and the receivers are tuned to a radio channel, basically, so that they can communicate. And the microphones I'm talking about are those little headsets that you see the kids use in the play so they can sing real loud and you can hear them in the back row. And so unfortunately, what happens is that the, the equipment is specifically tuned to that wavelength or that channel and there's no way to retune it to some other channel. It's, just becomes useless. Or you could still use it, but you would probably be having interference from things like cell towers and cellphone calls and stuff like that, so it would become fuzzy. And that's all supposed to take place in 2020, I believe in January is when the FCC has sort of said, y'all need to be out of here, which means that we wouldn't necessarily have to go out and buy them the first day of the fiscal year, but that by the end of the fiscal year, they would be experiencing problems with it.
What, I mean, how do we prevent that? First of all, is there no recourse from the seller?
I really don't know what our legal recourse would be. Oh, do you mean from the, the person that we purchased the microphones from? It's kind of not their fault.
Well, who, who assigns the wavelength? If the wavelength is attached to the equipment.
I think the wavelength was always open until right now and I think the sellers have been sort of, you know, smacked as well. They've probably got microphones sitting on their shelves that they'll never be able to sell because the FCC said, you don't, you can't have that wavelength anymore.
And how do we guarantee that doesn't happen again?
That I do not know.
Yeah.
That I do not know. I mean, if there, there's probably other technology out there that doesn't use radio frequencies, but I don't know what that would be and I, I don't know how expensive that would be.
Can we get the letter or something, the FCC letter, just to kind of understand that a little bit more?
Absolutely.
Presumably this isn't just us, this is happening affecting other people as well.
Oh, I'm sure.
Anybody who's.
I mean, that's a lot of money that you buy that.
That is a lot of money with no guarantee that it won't happen again.
You buy that equipment and then you don't.
Just for the sake of process, how about I drop a question into our Q and A?
That's a great idea.
And then I can cut and paste some of the FCC stuff that I got back up in there.
Yeah, I wonder if you can get off, I think we're all out of relief right now, but off.
I know, right? Isn't that terrible?
Off-iquity wireless mics.
We should probably.
We should probably be.
Somewhere, yeah, they're, they're shaking their heads at us so hard right now. Please stop talking, guys.
Some serious magical thinking going on right now.
Don't say microphones again.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so I'm going to just make a note here, I need more information about FCC changes. Making microphones, I can't spell either, obsolete, how's that? And then we'll, I'll just drop in what I have from them about it.
Great, thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Leanne's already Googled it and found some information about, from churches, so.
Yep, it includes there being fines and criminal sanctions if you don't get off the service.
Ooh, great.
I'll have to do that.
So I should increase the legal account while we're at it. Holy moly.
Pay now or pay later?
Yay, government.
Just sticking with CIP. Do you remember Julie, how much was, how much remained in the impact fee budget after we had the eight corners shut?
I, I don't know if I have it in this notebook specifically, but I believe there was probably around a hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus ten to twenty thousand.
And was that after the use of impact fees at a normal level in the debt service?
Right, and so I don't know if within the town budget, that has already been reallocated to offset debt service this year, which then would change the whole bottom line for all of us. Or if it was left sitting in that fund. It may have been applied to debt service.
School impact fees, so they shouldn't be reallocating it.
Well, but remember historically, the way that impact fees have been used have been to pay down debt service.
So, yeah, and that.
Which is ten percent of our budget, debt service.
Our debt service budgeted expenditure amount right now is based on what we know we already owe plus placeholder for the May 2019 bond issue, which Ruth is working on right now. So if we were to find that we actually owed less in debt service, then I think that's where we would see that, right? Where.
No, I think we are, I don't think we're going to have less debt than we expect, so to speak. But my understanding is that one of the, one of the things the town manager was talking about when it came to debt service and why there happens to be this surplus of funds, if you will, available this year is remember that debts, the, the school impact fees are typically two years out. So the money that we're, the amount of money available we're looking at today is from two years ago, was collected two years ago. And so typically, and I'm just going to use a hypothetical number, so please don't quote me on this. Let's say we normally use seven hundred thousand dollars to pay down debt service each year. This year, there's a million, right? And so that left that three hundred plus thousand dollars above what we would normally be able to, what we were normally paying down on our debt service. And so what Tom was saying is that we could apply it all to debt service this year, but then next year we'll have a big gap because we're moving that.
Our debt service costs will be that much higher.
Above and beyond. And so it was, the timing of it made it appropriate for us to seek those funds outside of budget cycle to fund this project. So I think alls we have to do is go back to the manager and say, are there still school impact fee funds available? Or have we applied them to debt service within this budget proposal?
I think one of the questions that we already did ask during the course of that eight corners project conversations we've been having is, if it's two years out, then what does last year look like? Is it back to sort of normal levels? And I don't kind of remember where that.
Yeah, I don't think we were able to project. The question we asked was, is there a way for us to be able to anticipate or project?
And the reason I ask that is because if you look at, if we're still on capital improvement under the technology section, there's about a hundred, just over a hundred thousand dollars that due to outfitting new classroom spaces. That, I think there's a strong argument there similar to the trailers that that could be made to, that that's due to growth. So we can get.
Well, it is due to growth. What's that, it is due to growth?
Yeah.
I think the challenge there, and I would have to go back and read specifically the language in the charter, is do we consider that bricks and mortars in today's day and we're, you know, day and age? Because it does specifically speak to bricks and mortar. And I don't think it's those specific words, but I would just want to read the charter closely and see if there's.
It's true.
Applicability.
Well, to Sarah's point, if there is a balance and available impact fees, we could put them towards the boilers. That was something that we had said was, was certainly, would be something that would qualify.
I don't know if that would because the boilers are needing to be replaced because they've aged out. It's not because of new growth.
Oh, I see, where is that, okay.
Well, don't we have the portables, the next round of portables in the budget?
Yeah.
That's true.
We can use it on.
Right.
I guess, I think at this point, it would be important to remember that in the capital budget, you've got items that are financed, bonded, leased, and items that are appropriated. So if our goal is to reduce the tax request from the schools in this current fiscal year, then the things that we would want to focus on would be the things that were going to be appropriated. And so the town manager and the town finance director are the people who actually make the decision about how to finance things. We say, here's our budget, we'd like this money, and they decide how that happens. But if we're trying to eliminate a cost to the town, then we would want to look at things that were going to be a direct cost to the town, meaning things that were not planned to be bonded. Yeah, things that were planned to be appropriated.
And is there anything in there that's.
So if you look in your budget book, we go to the capital section, if you have the town budget book, it's tab five. Where you can then see what's scheduled to be bonded, what's scheduled to be appropriated. And I'm not sure, Kate, what does T mean?
Uh, T, where's T?
On page fifty-four.
I didn't bring that one with me, I just brought a printout of it here.
Let me look with you.
Trade-in.
Trade-in, okay, thank you. And then.
Thank you. Appropriate.
R.
Oh, R is reserve funds.
Okay, so that's the coding that you see used in there, so B, bond, A, appropriate, trade-in and reserve.
What do you call it, there's a.
Ledger.
Legend somewhere there.
So, and then if you, so there's all the municipal stuff kind of on the first few pages and then you get to the school section on page fifty-nine. And so here's where you can see how things originally in first reading, but remember already that maintenance truck, it says appropriate here, but the town has lumped that in with four other vehicles to be financed. We talked about that earlier. So the outfit new classroom spaces with technology, that's scheduled to be bonded. And then additional teacher staff devices appropriated, switch, the five thousand dollar switch for K two appropriated. Does that make sense?
So what was the other trailer, sorry?
So the eight corners classrooms are scheduled to be bonded. The two classrooms.
So can we put a, can we put a question in there to read the charter and see if there's any way we can use any of that for the appropriated?
So I'm going to put a note that says, are there any additional column impact fees, right? Impact fees available to be used for school CIP? Does that get to kind of what you're thinking a little bit about?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So if we're looking at reducing the expense, the district-wide building envelope, which is the skylights, the masonry and the exterior doors, right now it's scheduled to be appropriated. Could that be shifted to bonded to reduce by a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, that was one of the items that Tom and I spoke about in our original thinking about this. And as you know, last night, the finance committee made some recommendations of things that they are going to be shifting. Unless you guys have, I think first we just need to know, are there anything, anything you want to remove or postpone from the CIP budget? And then I can work with Tom to decide what can be appropriated and what can be bonded, if that makes sense. But the input that we really need from you tonight is, of these projects that you see listed in that detail that Kate has provided, are there any that you think should be deferred? And I'll just circle back to where we started the conversation, IE scoreboards. That could be, if you think that could be deferred, that's important for us to know.
I think that's a possibility, I'd like that some of those more specific questions answered. And then the school buses replacements, actually, Mr. Pritchard asked how many buses we had and how many were sitting and if there were a number, he probably asked you that too. And do you have the answer to that?
So I don't know if I, I know this question gets asked yearly, I don't know that I saw the specific question this year. But we have twenty-two buses, I believe, in total.
I think we have, I'd have to count them. We have twenty-two drivers, but we have.
We wish we had twenty-two drivers, but I think we have twenty-two buses.
Okay.
But we'll get, we'll get. But we'll get, we'll get clear on that. But the goal is-
Can I tell you what the budget book says?
Yes, thanks.
Just to be specific.
There you go.
So, for FY nineteen, it says nineteen FTEs.
Drivers.
Drivers, and then it says the district owns twenty-nine buses and four minivans.
There we go.
There you go.
So, I, so the question was, if we own twenty-nine buses and we only have nineteen drivers, what are we doing with those buses and why are we asking for more?
So, the, the vehicles are on a replacement cycle. I think you know that our buses are maintained by public works. And so, the reason that you would want to replace a bus on an annual schedule, regardless of the mileage necessarily on that bus, is because of its age and its roadworthiness and its insurability. So, the reason that we have three buses instead of two buses, which was our usual replacement cycle for a number of years, is that in two thousand four and two thousand five, we bought, I think, twelve total buses. Through CIP, we made a massive fleet improvement, which was a great idea at the time because we, our fleet was in trouble. But in retrospect, it wasn't such a great idea because now all of those buses are aging out at the same time. So, this is the last year that we're, if we want to stay on cycle to have buses off the road after ten years, which is our recommended lifespan, we would do three buses this year and then we can go back to two buses next year. One of the cool things about this year is that we were able to obtain a grant from the state Department of Environmental Protection, which is through the VW settlement. And so, that we are slated to get money back from the state. But you can't, you can only get it as, not a rebate, refund, you-
You have to buy the bus.
It's not money upfront.
Yeah.
It's money that's given to you the year after. After you've shown that you've made that purchase. So, the actual cost to the district, a portion of that third bus will be paid for through the VW settlement. It should be about two-thirds, three-quarters of the bus. Seventy-five thousand, I think, is the amount.
So, what about the ten extra buses? Are we holding on to ten extra buses and is there a way that we can get reimbursed for some of those?
That we could, that we could downsize our fleet?
Reduce the fleet?
Well, I guess the, the question is, what's our long-term strategy? You know, I mean, up until now, our long-term strategy was, holy crap, we'd really like to have enough drivers to drive those buses. You always need some extra buses in the yard because buses break down. So, you wouldn't want to have twenty-two drivers and twenty-two vehicles. Because we all know vehicles, right? So, buses are finicky, just like everybody else's car. Could we have twenty drivers and twenty-five buses? And could we sell some? That's, that's a strategic question and it's worth considering.
Well, and if, if and when we can fully staff, we use all the buses between trips, sports, regular transportation. So, I think we use twenty-one or twenty-two buses just to do, when we're fully staffed, to do our daily morning and afternoon runs. And then, as you know, there's multiple sporting activities or clubs that need transportation after school.
Right, so we-
How can we use more drive, more buses than we have drivers?
We do currently have more buses than we have drivers.
Right, but, so you're saying we use twenty-one buses in a day, but we only have nineteen drivers?
Because we're not fully staffed. Like, if we were fully staffed, if we could be fully staffed, we would have twenty-one, twenty-two buses on the road every morning and every afternoon. And then, you have your sports and extracurricular activities. So, I'm trying to help you understand why there's twenty-nine buses in the yard.
Right, and remember that, well, maybe you don't remember because I haven't said it to you yet, but we do have spare drivers. In the good old days of plenty of bus drivers, we would have four or five spare drivers, and many of them only drove for sports trips or only drove for field trips. In which case, you know, that driver would have another bus while everybody else was out doing their regular runs.
I guess I'm interested in somewhat of an analysis of, of, we've got ten extra buses and how old they are. If they're ten-year turnaround, right? So-
Well, we've got, we've got a list of, you know, what the vehicles are, what the mileage is on them, what their lifespan is, if you will, you know, when they're, when they were built. And it sounds like it's a more, more of a strategic conversation though than just knowing like about the vehicles themselves. It's like the use of them, right? So, we need to have like a, a conversation. Maybe Sarah could help us put something together that explains where the buses are at any given moment so that we know that we're using our assets appropriately.
Or when, I mean, I, I guess she doesn't have a crystal ball. But I mean, if, if we're at eight, eight years or six years, I mean, realistically speaking, are we gonna be able to get all of those buses out on the road by the time they're, they're still good? Or are we better to cut our losses now and, and resell them?
Meaning the older ones, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so take them off the road sooner, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious to know if we didn't do the three buses. Let's say we didn't do two because the, it seems like we should do one if we're getting seventy-nine percent of it paid for. Is there any, what's the impact to, to the older students?
One thing I will say about the older buses is that once they're more than ten years old, you can't get insurance that will cover them for replacement value. So, that's an issue that we have faced occasionally. If a bus, an older bus is in an accident, they'll say, you know, it's kind of like an older car. They'll say, well, here's your two thousand dollars. Well, you can't go out and necessarily buy a bus for two thousand dollars. But they've, the insurance companies have a cutoff point where they'll say, well, we're not replacing that vehicle for you.
Well, I think that if they're recommending ten years, we shouldn't have them on the road after ten years. I would never suggest that.
But you're just thinking in terms of downsizing with the, the newer ones as well.
I just think the efficiency and the optics don't-
Just sort of talking about it in general, like where we're at and what this means and-
Right, and is this the new normal? Are we gonna be able to actually get bus drivers like we keep hoping and praying that we do?
Well, and the other thing too, I'm wondering, I, I hear the desire to downsize the fleet. I don't think it makes the best sense to do that by not investing in new buses because new buses have new safety features, more cameras, and the new, we're making sure that every bus has the all-clear feature. That's my words, I don't know what it's really called. So, you've heard stories of children falling asleep on buses and spending the night in the bus barn or wherever. And so, now, all of our new buses have not, instead of four cameras, five cameras. And they also have that, the bus driver literally can't leave the bus without going and checking all the seats and pressing, there's like a safety button in the back, otherwise it makes an alarm go off so that everyone knows that this bus hasn't been checked. And so, that, that's one of the safety features among others that comes with the new more efficient buses as well, so.
Thank you.
But I think there's a way to think about our, you know, can we offload three buses?
And only repli, you know, and get two or-
Yeah, let's talk about it and see.
Yeah, I think we ought to connect with public-
Yeah, I'm putting it into our, this is, I'm using the BOE questions, the big spreadsheet thing, just for a simple place to put things. And could we downsize the fleet based on our current experience?
I mean, I just want to be clear though, these are questions and conversations. It doesn't mean that by asking them, I'm advocating, first of all, for a, certainly not for an unsafe bus.
Oh, no, no, no.
I mean, and, and, and I'm not even advocating for any outcome. I just think that the responsible thing to do is to have these conversations.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Absolutely. I think, you know, what we're saying is, can we provide the safety, the, the services that we need to provide at a lower cost? And that's a fair, fair question.
It's always a fair question. I'm just gonna grab this MC so. Is there anything else in the capital you guys, Julie's question, I think should be deferred or? Do you have a thought together?
Other, so, what Julie's put in, for, or Kate, in the blue section? I would love, we're gonna get a quote or try to get a quote from the alumni gym scoreboard. I agree with the plumber gym sound system. And then, I'd be interested in, you know, considering the plumber, plumber gym and some of the other things. Having convers, additional conversations about some of the other CIPs that we're talking about.
Getting a little more clear on the cost.
Yeah.
So, if you go through and just as a matter of closing out the CIP, does everyone have clarity on the tech equipment replacement and why that's needed? Good, right on the first page of this chart here. Just to go through, any clarifying questions about the new tech equipment? This is related to the news, the K-two classrooms.
Yeah, and I guess the only, if you want to call it a decision point there, is the way that we've laid it out in, in furnishings and tech equipment in the coming year is that we will have potentially six new classrooms. So, if you say, well, we'll really know that we are going to have four new classrooms, but we might have two more after that, do we want to reduce the ask for tech and furnishings to acknowledge that there might be four classrooms instead of six? Does that make sense?
Do we get economies of scale by doing these for six? Are there any benefits?
I would say for the furnishings, yes. For the, for the tech, maybe not so much because it's not huge numbers. Like, if you're talking Chromebooks, buying sixty versus a hundred is probably not gonna be a, a price point. For furnishings, probably, yeah. But we could do quotes a couple of different ways too. I guess what's, the, the wonder is, we do have in our budget, in CIP, the other two classrooms. And that we don't necessarily have to spend the money if we don't implement those two other classrooms. We just have the budgetary authority to do it, right?
Right, and we wouldn't. So, I think that's the important thing. This eighty-eight, nine here is to furnish six classrooms. We know for a fact, we're bringing four classrooms online for this school year. And then, the other part that's out there is the two additional modulators at eight corners. I think that, you know, every day, we're kind of getting reaffirmed that our projections are accurate, if not low. So, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm gonna project that you're gonna end up needing those classrooms. And if you, remember, we don't spend it if we don't need it. Just because it's in here does, it gives us the opportunity to, if the need arises. If not, you're then waiting for the next budget cycle and putting it into the next. So, that's, that is a decision point.
I don't want to gamble with that, I mean, not as very basic.
Well, and the other question is, is, does it really get to our end goal, which is to reduce the tax request? And the tech for the classrooms is considered bonded on this one? And, um, looking for furnishings, the new classroom furnishings on the chart I'm looking at is appropriated. So, that would maybe be a place, but it's not big bucks.
But you said you thought the furnishings, you'd get a deal when you do-
Get a better deal when you do the-
Tables and chairs, yeah.
Tables, chairs, desks, cubbies, anything that you see that looks like a piece of furniture when you walk into a Kate classroom.
I mean, honestly, A, I just feel like it's such a significant, yeah, it's small and it's such a significant need. If it happens, then it's not even worth it.
Okay, so then, let's just keep going down the line, facilities and maintenance projects. Just take a look and skim and scan through there if there's any clarifying questions or, I mean, every single thing is a choice. But as you know, one of the things that was very clearly articulated during the leadership council meeting was how underfunded facilities has been. And so, just keeping that in mind here, we have some roof restoration scheduled, some painting at the middle school, replacing and retrofitting inadequate features, replacing the leaking skylights at the middle school gym, masonry repairs, and exterior doors, kind of on this page here.
I've, I've already reviewed it and, like I said at the town council meeting, I think that the needs here are so shocking that I can't even imagine touching any of that, that budget. And we're, we're fifty percent less than the recommended, what, what the state recommends for facilities, I just-
We were just talking about that. I mean, the, we've spent so much time in the past few months talking about facilities and the needs and, you know, the fact that we're just kind of keeping our heads above water, trying to keep things moving. And to go in and sort of start taking apart the five-year plan again, just to look for a small savings-
A nickel and a dime, right.
Is, is, is maybe not the place we want to start.
I mean, I mean, if, if we are talking about not painting our schools, not replacing leaky fixtures, we really need to have, you, you talk about our priorities. I mean, we really need to have a serious discussion that's really bad and-
I agree.
I mean, replace middle school failing toilets is one of the items. I'm gonna leave that. Advocate for those.
And I did, I did talk with Todd today, Kate and I both did, if there were any projects that he could recommend being deferred and what the impact would be. And he hands down said, please, please, oh, please, not HVAC, so.
I heard a lot earlier when you were there.
Which is the sign, a significant portion here that I believe is mostly scheduled to be bonded, with the exception of the high school Wentworth HVAC, not Wentworth High School HVAC controls. It's a hundred and fifteen thousand, that's scheduled to be bonded as well. The district-wide HVAC repairs is scheduled to be bonded, and then the trailers is what's on this page. So, that's all currently scheduled to be financed. The truck we talked about on the next page. And then, this is the classroom furnishings, which we just talked about. The high school auditorium equipment, which is the wireless microphones, which we discussed. Athletics, and then transportation. So, that wraps it up. And then, on the back sheet here, you have sort of a schedule of what CIP has looked like over the last several years. Slightly higher this year, but considering some of the significant repairs, it's not astronomical.
I think we're good on that.
Good.
Is there a methodology you want to use to go through the operating budget, Julie, or you want to just shout out?
I think, I mean, we could go in order for the sake of just following. If there's, if you have specific line items that you have questions with. The big, it starts with middle school and then goes to Wentworth for regular instruction, works through the schools. We talked about the ed techs, which I know that was a big question. You all saw the response to course reimbursement. And again, that, that's something that can be a choice moving forward for the board. In the contract, the way that it reads is that teachers, this year, they had until June thirtieth to submit their course reimbursement plans. And then, that's how we determine how much we allocate in the budget. It's based on actual enrollments. We do budget a, a small amount for new staff that may be hired after the budget cycle begins because it's a contractual object, obligation. Here's a complete breakdown for you by school. And one of the things that you notice at the high school, which has a significant increase this year, is we actually have a cohort of high school teachers who are part of a leadership cohort. And that's something we have not yet had high school teachers be a part of this, so it's really exciting for us. And that's why you see such a significant increase there. I can't remember, we could do the quick math to figure out how many folks are doing that. But they have in their contract up to nine credits reimbursed at the USM rate, is how we calculate that. And then, they can apply for additional credits to be reimbursed at the superintendent's approval. That hasn't happened this year that I'm aware of. I think everyone's within the, the guidelines of the contract. So, I, I thank you, Kate, for putting it all in one spot because it's sort of throughout each school's line.
Yeah, and I, I did put a response into our Q and A spreadsheet. What number is that, Kate?
Let's see here. Oh, it's not, it's just the last one. It wasn't till I messed around with it. It's the very bottom of the chart.
Thirteen. Line fourteen.
Fourteen. Yeah, so, just to be a little more precise about the process, what happens is, under the teachers collective bargaining agreement, there's a requirement that the teachers submit a professional development plan to central office each year. And I believe it's by January thirty, end of January each year for the following year, which allows us to build a list of all the teachers who are in programs and who are going to be approved to have credits paid for. And so, we actually have the, the sort of real list. And so, on this chart that I just handed out, that first column is people who already have a plan in place to take courses and that we've said that that's okay. And then, the second column is estimated for new hires. And since we discovered in the past couple of years that we've- And since we discovered in the past couple of years that we've had folks come in to the district who are already in a degree program, or they're already working through, you know, working toward their masters, they've come in the door and said, hey, what do y'all do for course reimbursement? And in most districts, there's not really a requirement for you to sign up ahead of time or to know a year in advance. So we felt that it wasn't necessarily fair to exclude those folks, especially if they were already in an existing program and just trying to continue with what they were already doing in another district. So this year, we built in a little bit of extra to support those folks. And the numbers that you see in that second column with three classes, two classes, one class, are based on what we know about new positions and turnover. So, you know, if we know that somebody's retiring and that someone new is coming in, then there's a chance that person that we hire might have, um, a need for, to take a course. And we would want to be able to honor that under the Teachers' Collective Bargaining Agreement. So we built in a little bit of a cushion there. And just know that we only allow or approve courses to the degree that we have money to support it. So what we have in the budget is essentially a cap on what we can allow teachers to take. And the, the past couple of years, we've worked really hard on trying to get that prior knowledge, rather than just sort of, you know, do a survey, are you in a master's program? We really have, like, specific prior approval, um, months before the new fiscal year so that we can, we can have accurate numbers.
So the only decision point you have here is whether or not to create the opportunity for new hires to, who are currently enrolled, to access that benefit per the collective bargaining agreement.
How, what, how many of these are...
So, um, do you have any idea, I don't know what, how to articulate this, any idea of the, um, rate of retention for the number of new hires?
Like, so do we get, do we get a, a return on our investment if we pay for that, if they stay?
Most of our, um, we have a lot of longevity in our district. Last year, I mean, I think you can just look at retirement, right? I have not done a years of service analysis since FY seventeen, um, but we certainly, it's a big project, but I, I'm happy to try to squeeze that in in the next sixty days. Took a little longer than that the first time, but, um, what I would say is you look at the longevity of your teaching staff, and the majority of your staff are at the top of the scale. So that tells me that the answer to that is yes. You do have a good return on investment. And one of the things Leanne and I were having a lengthy discussion about is the value of that HR specialist is to help ensure that we get that return on investment by, um, really amping up recruitment or retention strategies with folks. But here in Scarborough, we're a pretty, we're a pretty desirable district. Folks want to come here and want to stay here when they get here, for the most part.
Well, I think that, that, you know, eighteen thousand dollars goes towards that. I mean, it's more expensive if, if we have turnover and to pay for that. So, I mean, eighteen thousand is, in my mind, if it, if it increases...
And we, and we may never access all of that, because again, it's dependent upon prior enrollment, right? Already coming to us, already enrolled. It's not coming in September and saying like, ooh, now I want to take some courses. Because in that case, I do, in every single new hire, my conversation is to make them aware of this benefit and make sure that they know the timeline. So they would know that, okay, plan for that for next year, put it in by January.
And it, it is a way for us to be competitive with other school districts because it's a very common benefit that's offered for teaching staff, partly because they need to keep up their classes for certification, but also because we want them to be able to progress and continue learning. And so, um, it's a way for us to have a benefit package that parallels the benefit packages in other surrounding communities for teachers.
And we want to keep them.
Right, so if I'm a teacher and I'm looking around for a new job, and Scarborough has course reimbursement and Gorham doesn't, okay, that's a decision point for me, right? If I'm in a master's program.
Well, and specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, specifically what we're talking about are people who are currently enrolled in a program.
Exactly.
Know that they have that expense.
Exactly, so am I...
So I know that this is, is an expense of mine, and I'm looking at one district and I'm looking at another district, and one has that reimbursement and the other doesn't. That's, that would certainly be a factor in my decision.
It's, it's definitely gonna influence where you might choose to be employed.
Yep.
Well, I guess it's not a retention issue then, is it? Because... It's an attraction issue, really.
Well, it also has to do with retention. If we're reimbursing their courses and they stay a year or two, and then take flight for another district, you know, will we have seen the...
Well, no, but they'll get it as part of their CPA the next year, is, is my point.
Yes, yes.
That eighteen is just attraction.
Do we actually, it's a good point, do we have any qualifications, like if they get this, they have to remain on for...
No. There's no contingency clause.
Good questions. We have that at my company.
Right, if you get reimbursed, then you have to stay.
Then you have to get, yeah, and there are...
Is that something that is, and you have to give an A?
That would, that would have to, that's a good...
You have to get above, like, a certain grade.
That's bargaining. That's bargaining, yep.
Okay. You do have to be successful in the course. You can't flunk it. So that's in there.
What's our grade requirement?
A plus? Have to have a B or better in the class.
Oh, you do? A B?
I think that's still in the language, isn't it?
We're gonna bump that to a B plus.
Am I, am I making that wrong?
High standard.
I don't recall that language.
Okay, so maybe I'm, I'm recalling the last contract, so I...
Some questions from...
Yeah, I'm not gonna look it up now, but we can, it's clearly articulated on the contract.
But I, but I, you know, it's not, it's not a, um, you're required to stay on with us if.
We'd never retain anyone after something like that.
And, and I don't think you would really want to do that because there's a variety of reasons why you want folks to stay, but also why you might want folks to... Yep, move on down the road. So, I think it's more making sure that they're in an accredited program, and then I think it's incumbent upon us to say, how is this gonna improve your practice? And that's where our energy is best spent. Okay. So that was another big one here within this individual school lines. I don't know if you guys have any other things, burning questions?
I did have one, I'm just trying to find...
Oh, postage was a question. Do you want me to talk about that one? So do you want Kate to talk about that one?
I don't, but there, there's a lot budgeted, and we don't use very much.
What the heck postage? Okay, so, so postage is, is one of my favorite lines. What happened is that in FY seventeen, our postage costs were really high.
Really high.
Like, really high. And we sort of had this, why is this happening, what the heck is wrong, um, situation. And my, my colleague Renee, who is a bulldog and a vendor genius, um, worked with, uh, Pitney Bowes to figure out what the heck was going wrong. And it turned out that there were billing errors, and they gave us a massive credit. So the massive credit...
The machine was like duplicating the bills.
So it was, it was accumulating, basically, instead of clearing, um, clearing the account when we were paying the bill. So we received a massive credit from them, which helped us not spend that money most of last year in FY eighteen, and then half of this year. And now we're back to spending the money, and now the FY twenty budget represents what we normally would spend on postage. So if it hadn't been for vendor craziness, it would have been a much steadier, normal trajectory over those four years.
And we do mail much, um, very little, actually. It's just the sheer volume of the mailing. And one thing that we do mail every year is test scores, in grades three through eight. So that's something that people want to have a hard copy of, they should have a hard copy of, and it shouldn't be something that's emailed because it's a student record.
And you know that you get it, because we actually moved it, but...
Yep. But most everything else we do electronically, as you know, parents.
Uh, can you, what does Pitney Bowes do? Do they do just the address thing, sending it? Um, no, it's our postage meter. So it's actually, it's the actual postage. We use a Pitney Bowes postage meter because if you have metered mail, it costs a little bit less per unit than putting stamps on things. So, yeah, here's like middle school, but yeah, high schools. Look at middle school right here. So you have a big number, then you have, like, oh, we didn't spend anything. Then you have the budgeted amount, we spend, like, much less than the budgeted amount because of a credit. And then, but this is what we really anticipate it costing us.
So any other questions about regular instruction? No? Okay. The next is ESL. If there's anything to, out of the ordinary there.
I would mention that in the, the budget categories that you're looking at in the lineup, they're, they're laid out in the budget categories that the voters vote on. Some of the categories are super concentrated with human beings, personnel costs make a difference. This kind of goes to that conversation about the ed techs, where your, if your budget category is made up almost entirely of people, then personnel costs might drive a different type of change than if you have a lot of contracted services. Or like, if you look at facilities, you've got utilities in there that are part of the mix. So it's that, um, being conscious of when you see an increase, a percent change in a, in a category, what might be driving that. And ESL comes to mind because it's basically all people.
Right. Nothing there? The next section is gates, so this is gifted and talented, um, instruction. Same story as ESL that this Kate just told you.
Slightly different, um, twist on that one is that in gates, we have one employee who's retiring, and, um, so we have a retirement stipend in there as well, which is not typical for that department. But other than that, everything's pretty much the same. And again, it's all personnel costs for the most part.
Can I ask a general gates question that probably would have been more appropriate for the workshop, but I'm just now thinking of it? How come it's listed as K eight? To, do we have a program at the K two? Like, what services do the gates educators provide to students at the K two phase level? And really, it's not until fourth grade.
Right. I think it's more embedded in the instruction. We're required to have a gates program, and every year Allison puts in a plan to the state that then gets approved. And, but, it's not necessarily appropriate to identify a child that young. I mean, it can happen where they might require some supplemental or replacement type of instruction because they are so brilliant. But typically, that happens within the classroom setting. It's not a pullout model like it is in some of the other grades.
Right, and, and to your point, April, that the K eight designation, it does come from the state. So they divide things into K eight and nine twelve when they ask us for reporting. So it's almost like a, a financial piece and an accounting piece, more than it is, like identifying the actual programming that we have in school.
Yep, interesting. Thank you, that answers it perfectly.
The next is special services. And this, I will say, um, all today, they were having, um, IEP meetings with incoming K students, so we're, we're continuing to do that. There's, I think, eight different days scheduled between now, and actually, the last one happens the day of our second reading. So we can anticipate that there may be some refinements as they have those conversations and really assess, you know, what services those incoming students might need. That work is well underway. I have not gotten a new number since the last time I reported, so... Okay. Then CTE is the career technical education. And this is an area that we're actually getting some clarification on. You can see that we've budgeted nine thousand here. And if you look at the history for CTE, you'll see that we went from budgeting two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, down to nine thousand. But then, and you look at what we actually, the projected actual for FY nineteen, it's much lower. And this is because the, the funding mechanism shifted at the state level. So rather than us receiving part of the funding through our formula, it's now directly, directly funded to the CTEs. And so what, um, we're looking into is, do we need to have this buffer in the budget? Will there be any bills coming our way that we might need to cover?
Right, so, um, when this, the funding model shifted for the first time this year, so, um, there was some discussion among the VOG schools, and we use PATHS and Westbrook Vocational, Regional Vocational Center as our two sending schools. When we were meeting with the leaders of those schools, they were trying to learn from the state what it was that they were gonna get for funding, and would it be sufficient to cover their programming? And there was sort of a caveat that if there were items that they needed to operate, um, they needed funding to operate that wasn't provided by the state, that they would be turning back to the sending schools and saying, hey, guess what, guys, you still owe us some money. So that's where, we, we still have some uncertainty because this is the first year that we're living that model. And my, I did put it as one of my items in motion, I'm gonna reach out to them now that the VOG schools have probably been building their budgets, to find out if they have any expectation that we'll owe them anything in the coming year. And that could be something we could reduce, it could be something we could take out. I hope it's not something that they say, well, yeah, actually, we're gonna ask you for fifteen thousand.
That would be a bad surprise, right?
But we'll ask the question and find that out.
Okay.
Can I, uh, throw in that you do have to have an A or a B?
We don't have to have an A.
What?
Kate found it in the language.
B and B, what?
Kate found it in the language.
For your VOG course, Julie, that you're taking. No, for, for course reimbursement or course prepayment, yeah, there's, there's a requirement that you have to attain a grade of an A or B, you have to complete the course, you have to succeed. Succeed. And Sarah's gonna change that to a B plus.
An A, only an A. The next section is our other instruction, which includes athletics and extracurriculars.
So, we've got a high school athletic director, an assistant athletic director, a middle school athletic director, and then a part-time athletic director, I don't know what...
Clerk.
Clerk, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we really need all of those positions?
I would say yes. Um, and so, we have one athletic director, and then we have an assistant of athletics. He's not an assistant director, he's an hourly employee, and he assists with all the game setup, takedown, supervising games, scheduling, um, a lot of the tech advances that we've had with, um, the athletics department has been a direct result of this person and his role. At the middle school, we have a teacher, a middle school teacher who receives a stipend to oversee middle school athletics. Simply logistics, they're often running programs at the exact same times in different places, some away, some home. And so he oversees directly that, but he also works with, um, the students directly in terms of eligibility. So if there's a student who's, um, at the middle school who is underperforming or is showing signs of at-risk behavior, he develops a plan with those students directly to help them, um, improve their academics so that they can continue to be eligible. And he also oversees, like, some of the five oh fours at the, um, middle school. At the high school, Mike Legage is our athletic director. He oversees all of the programming's K twelve. That includes Wentworth extracurriculars as well. If you see that, some of that here in the budget, we've made some of those shifts here in coordinating all of that, working directly with community services around those shared services for the overall fields and coordination of that. And he serves, part of his, um, responsibilities at the high school is he's part of the building leadership team, so he's a fourth member of that leadership team, and he does all of the, like, medical five oh fours, um, which has all those meetings and makes sure that those modifications are put in place. And then our, the, I don't know, I'm saying clerk, that's the role that most people could associate, I'm not sure what kind of creative title we have, but she runs the office portion of the athletics department, and she's a part-time, hourly employee. Makes sense?
It just seems redundant to me, uh, from, as an outsider.
The other person, I'm sorry, listen, the other person that's in the, um, there was a question on Amy's list about the different line items, um, and the athletic, the line that includes a salary for the athletic director also includes the athletic trainer, so...
Oh, I saw that.
It's not really labeled that way, but, yeah, I'm sorry I cut you off, though, so go ahead.
And do we have an athletic trainer and a part-time athletic trainer as well?
We have one athletic trainer who is full-time, on staff, contracted salary and benefits, that's Joe Davis. And then we have, uh, a contract with me, medical partners for a part-timer, um, who assists us, and that's a contracted... And then we have a contract with me, medical partners for a part-timer who assists us and that's a contracted service. So he's not an employee.
Right.
So he's part of that contracted services line and.
I thought I saw that too. Is that something standard to have athletic trainers for the high school level?
Athletic trainers and athletic trainer at the high school level is definitely a standard.
Really?
Yeah, particularly with concussion management.
Huge.
There's a state requirement mandate now that there's concussion testing and concussion protocols. So that's basically a full-time job in and of itself.
The concussion testing and protocol, well, the concussion testing, does that need to be done onsite or can that be done? It does.
Yeah, they do pre-testing. They use a software, but they.
I'm aware of the software and that sort of thing. So like my son had a concussion, took him to his doctor and got the testing to find out what, you know, where he was at and.
Do they do baseline testing? Because that's what our guys do.
In middle school, so he, he was too early.
It was too soon for that, yeah.
So I'm just, the requirement is that the testing occur at the school is what you're saying, the concussion testing?
I don't know if that's actually in the law.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the specific requirement. But I was trying to see, I don't know if it's in this, but if you were to look at, we've been starting to gather more data or use the data that we gather much more efficiently and the sheer number of points of contact, or I forget the way that. Is it in the presentation? Treatments and injuries. So August two thousand eighteen to just January two thousand nineteen, there were sixty-two injuries and five thousand thirty-nine treatments at, done by our athletic trainers. Either before practices or before games, during games, during practices. They also go to the games so that, I'm sure you've seen Joe. If you've been to a volleyball game, basketball game, they're always there so that if there is an injury, both on our, when we're the home team, we need to have our athletic trainer there because if the visiting team is injured, they need to also be able to respond to that student. And so that's a, a standard practice as far as I understand across the MPA, but I can certainly verify if it's.
Well, how about the days if you got hurt, you, your parents walked it on?
Yeah, your parents probably go to the doctors.
Yeah, you're really dating yourself because you had athletic trainers when I was here. Thank God, I didn't get a lot of concussions.
And we have, I mean.
They didn't have them at my school.
We have a lot of three-sport athletes who get a lot of injuries. But I think to the question of is it excessive or not, we also have probably one of the highest, if not the highest participation rates. Not only in the state, but I would probably argue in New England. I mean, to have almost all of our students engaged in some sort of extracurricular and it's not just sports, right? It's all the clubs. We have over thirty clubs at the high school. Those are all overseen directly by our athletic director. Technically athletic and extracurriculars director, athletic and activities rather. But we're getting better at collecting some of this data so people can really see that return on investment. Not to mention, part of his role is also managing and facilitating and supporting our booster groups. And that's a big job in and of itself as well.
Well, I mean, it seems clear that we need an athletic director. I just, it just, for me, some of those, without knowing what, you know, what anybody does. It just, to hear we've got an athletic director and assistant at middle school, that, those are just, I guess, points of clarification for me that I make me wonder.
I agree with that. I think one of the drawbacks of having alumni on the board is, I remember what it was like. We just had an athletic director and a coordinator and I'm sure the, I, I know enrollment has gone up and I know participation has gone up. But it still ran well. And so I would just, I'm not necessarily questioning the value of it. Maybe just, just like the, are we being efficient with our resources? I don't know how we answer that question.
I know. That's, yeah, so.
Without talking about like.
I feel yucky asking the question because I don't want to, I don't want to say, you know, somebody's not, position's not worthwhile. But without knowing that what, what occurs, it's hard to quantify that.
I'm going to put a note in our questions, can we clarify roles and responsibilities of athletics and activities staff? And that way we can sort of have like, you know, well, what do you do all day? And then that would be really kind of the answer, right? Whether those tasks that are being undertaken by those people are important to us and needing it done.
Thank you. Thanks.
That would be if I could type that.
And, and I guess I'm quantifying some of my curiosity statements. Again, I just want to be clear that that's not a judgment. That's more of an inquiry and, and trying to find out what, you know, just asking responsible questions.
Yep. I appreciate it.
I have one other question about athletics.
I do.
Sure.
Is with the booster funds that have turned over and I can't think of what his title is, but Bill.
The bookkeeper.
The bookkeeper. Is that part of the athletic budget as well or is that separate?
No, that is a separate account. This is, this is the operating budget. You don't see any booster funds in this budget here.
I didn't know if his position was part of this.
His position is actually in my office.
Oh, okay.
He's considered a business office employee because he's a banking guy with the money.
In the extracurricular budget, is there a line that indicates what we pay people who work games?
That would be. Kate, do you know where that gets charged? People who, people who manage games.
That's under the five, three, two, zero, zero, zero. It's contracted services under athletics. So game supervision is in the same line as referees.
Officials and services.
Officials, yes. Is that what you're asking, April? The people who.
It's on page one eighty-nine, bottom.
Four from the bottom.
So look for athletics and activities.
Yep.
And look for, well, there's one in the high school and there's one at the middle school. But if you were in the high school section.
Thank you. And there's just a slight increase there because official fees go up like a certain percentage each year.
Those are set by the MPA from, for the most part, not our, our local folks who take tickets and game supervision, but the actual officials and refs.
And our athletic director is in charge of assigning people to work games and take tickets and all of those kinds of things. So he dictates how many, how many people are necessary and, you know.
There's some sort of formula.
What events require.
Depending on the size of the event, how many people are required.
For site supervision?
Yeah.
There's a facilities formula that says depending on the size of your group, you might need to have a custodian or you might need to have a site supervisor for outside groups. But for our own activities, I think it's just up to the, you know, understanding of the department, right?
No, I think there's, there's a formula for it because depending upon like a football game versus a volleyball game, you're going to see a different amount of game supervision or not. And actually, this is something that's in our contract that doesn't act, doesn't happen regularly. But staff are also, in the contract, it says that they would.
It's one of their duties.
Yeah, as a duty attend or facilitate at least one event. That has not been put into practice for a number of years and that will be a sticky one if, if and when that is readdressed. Probably in this contract, I'm sure they're talking about that. But high school administrators attend, have to attend depending upon if it's a basketball game, maybe one. If it's a football game, all three typically. If it's a home game also as part of their oversight, oversight. But I will find out the specific formula used for game coverage.
Right.
But there is, and Kate, I'm probably not going to use the right language. If there's an outside event, somebody, let's say square dancing at one of the schools, I think that's on the agenda tonight or next time. There has to be a staff member there as a supervisor of that event as well. And that really just helps make sure that the facility are well cared for and that if somebody needs something or something goes wrong, there's somebody who knows how the school works.
So is that a teacher that does that or is that out of this?
It depends. Sometimes it's like, it's usually someone from central office, like some of the support staff at central office will do those things as extra, extra pay.
Right. So for outside groups, it's usually not athletic staff so much as either central office staff, maybe some folks who have community services can act as site supervisors. Or the custodian is sometimes if it's a small group.
Both.
They, they're there for both basically because they're going to be there anyway to clean up. So they're, they're there as a person to be helpful.
So that five, three, two thousand will pay for that as well?
Actually, that would come out of revenues from the outside group.
Right. They get charged for that.
If it, it would depend on where the, the person. Okay, yes. So on the expenditure side, I might have somebody coming out of that line who's covering for the cheering invitational. But the cheering invitational is also providing revenue to cover that cost. So yes. It would depend on the nature of it. If it's a custodian, they would be in facilities expenditures.
And sometimes like say square dancing, for example, we might waive the fees for a group or depending on what the group is. There's different Girl Scouts, I think is one that we might waive before.
Service organization kind of.
Well, I, I mean, I guess even more importantly than the rubric is, are we following the rubric?
For the high school events?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would want to say yes. I think there's always lots of, you know, adequate supervision when I go to events. But I can verify that as well.
And I'm assuming that there, there's some kind of pay matrix. Like does, is it just one stipend for, like if you, if you do this job, then you get this stipend? And is it the same for every sport and like?
So this wouldn't be a stipend. This would be like an hourly rate of pay. Right? Different than a stipend, which is like a lump sum.
Oh, yeah. I totally assumed that if you took tickets at a basketball game, you got twenty-five dollars or whatever.
Right. Yeah.
But that's not what it is. It's an hourly.
I don't know exactly. It's an hourly rate of pay, I think, yeah.
So if they go on overtime.
But they also, there's like, there's, they don't stay the whole game. They're only there till a certain point. We don't, you know, you only need to take tickets for the first half.
But they have people like in the gym kind of hanging out supervising and that sort of thing.
Right, right. So usually, like if I'm thinking about a basketball game, it's usually your trainers, your principal, the athletic director himself or Jordan is usually there or me, not that I'm doing anything but watching. So I don't, for those types of things, after the, the people take the tickets, there's, I don't know that there's anyone getting paid at that moment because they're there and there are other job functions that they're getting paid for, if that makes sense. But they're responsible for supervising and required.
Jordan's the only one that would be hourly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So like for a director, you'd get, there's no limit on the number of hours you serve.
Right, right.
You're just there.
So, so then.
There's no overtime.
Most of this, I'm assuming that is officials.
The majority of it. So I mean, a good example is to go back to the unified. You can really see the difference between what a varsity official makes versus what a JV official makes. And that, like Kate said, that's all regulated. And we have to have X number of officials for us, for each activity. Yep. And so just in wrapping up athletics, unless there's more questions, I think it's pretty remarkable to take a step back and think about our athletic department, which is one of the most visible things that we do, right? So people have lots of opinions about it. Plus it's a source of passion for the athletes and the parents and the community alike. We, this whole operation is run on one point three million dollars. That's mind-blowing to me. And I mean in a good way. Mind-blowing in terms of efficiencies. We do a lot for our kids and our community with our extracurriculars and activities and that's not a fat budget. All right. So the next one is guidance services. I don't know if there's any specific questions about that.
I think you had one, but I think you answered it in the, just about the contracted services.
Guidance contracted services, yeah. One of the things, that, that's another sort of unusual line this year because you noted that I had projected that we were only going to use half of it. We actually diverted five thousand dollars to another instructional line at the high school because the guidance department had money in the bank in their activity account that they wanted to use up, that they didn't have any reason to accumulate it. They get fees from the college board for putting on testing. And so that had accumulated little by little over the, over the years until they had a significant amount. And it's supposed to be used to pay the proctors or to pay for snacks for the kids or what have you for the tests. Mostly to pay the proctors, but the proctors are giving the test during the school day. They didn't have to be paid. And so this year, in that line, we have a ten thousand dollar budget and then we have five thousand dollars that we anticipate spending because they would normally spend ten thousand and then they were getting the funds from another source. So why did we increase it? And that was just based on what that department had proposed for their budget for next year. And I think that major increase was really in offerings of some online course opportunities for kids, which was coming out of their budget.
It was actually Naviance, BYU Harvard X extension courses at five hundred each. And so that would have been based on what they were projecting, the number of students they were projecting were going to meet those courses.
And Naviance is sort of a constant because that's in that line. That's the bulk of that line every year anyway.
Yeah, but, but we are, we did expand with Naviance, the alumni tracker. So we're trying to stay more connected with our alumni. And this will be the first year that we get to do that with our graduating seniors. Hello, are you guys here for the school board meeting? Come on in. We're just finishing up the finance meeting. Come on in.
So time check, six twenty eight?
Six twenty. Health services, any questions there?
Another little jump in that line, in that budget category is a, is a retirement stipend as well, which is sort of unusual because we never let anyone go. They're not allowed. But if you didn't have the retirement stipend in that category, you'd actually have a four point six percent increase rather than a, was it six point four?
Right.
So again, one of those personnel-heavy lines where one little element can give it a good bump.
How, how much would our elementary school class sizes or, or the num, enrollment figures have to jump before we would have to have additional health services employees? Is that something that you could envision happening or?
Well, the problem, I think, is just space-wise, right? You don't really have space to put an additional health services employee. And I don't know that there's a, like a state guideline for number of students to nurse ratio. I'm sure they're actually.
Don't know if there's, there probably is a case load.
It's probably in our ED two seventy-nine.
But it's, we have actually added one full-time nurse in the past five years. We started incrementally and added a halftime position. And it was, unfortunately, that was in response to existing needs that we just, you know, we're being overwhelmed by some of the, the medical needs of our kiddos. But it's a good question. I mean, all of those ancillary kinds of services will grow if you're in enrollment growth.
Well, I'm just worried, you know, is that something that.
Eight hundred to one is the state guideline, which is the minimum expectation.
So that's the minimum requirement.
So they say that, and this is for, I should be clear here. Is this pre-KK? No, yeah. So students to staff ratio, eight hundred to one for a nurse.
Boy, that would be really hard.
And so I think ours is.
The K two's come close.
That's, that's at pre-KK. Then one to five, it's one, eight hundred to one, six to eight, eight hundred to one, nine to twelve, eight hundred to one.
They must have a different school population from what we.
Are we eight hundred to one?
So, no.
No.
No, no, no. We have, so that would be a total of three point six. We have six point O FTEs total. If I'm in the right area. So.
So we're fine?
We're good.
Yeah. And there is, you know, there, there would be an opportunity to shift staff too. We have in the past had our school nurses be more itinerant. Right now, we have, everybody has a home base except for the K two's, which obviously they move around. But, you know, we have the ability to split the staff days. It's not the most efficient thing, but to accommodate shifts in enrollment. So if we like see declining enrollment in one building and increasing in another, we, we do have a little bit of flex there.
Thank you.
But it's a good point though, because when we say we need another classroom teacher, then, you know, in the long term, you're really thinking if it's a big increase in enrollment overall, you're also thinking about all those ancillary services.
Here's a little fun fact, since I'm looking at this. So for teachers, the state guideline, student to staff ratio for pre-KK is fifteen to one. One to five, seventeen to one. Six to eight, seventeen to one. High school, sixteen to one.
That's the reimbursement. That's the reimbursement model, basically.
That's the, yeah, ratio.
The, the, uh, funding model ratio.
Can I just check, are, is our meeting in here or in there?
It's in here.
We're in here for school board?
Yes.
Oh, really? I'm never going to be warm ever again. I was, I like counting down the minutes until we could leave this icebox. I'm just crushed.
Wait, you're too hot or are you too cold?
She's cold.
Oh, it's always cold here.
Just in the interest of time, should we, are there like specific things that you guys want to talk about? Cause there's quite a few more categories.
I've asked, I think, all my...
Yeah, I, my prioritized list of questions, we've hit every one of mine.
So apart from, um, just gathering some more information based on what the questions have been, which we can work on, and, and I had also said to Sarah that we'll try to pull things together into one place, cause we've been answering emails, and, um, Sarah put some things into our old Q and A doc, and we'll, we'll sort of fluff things up so that everything's in one spot. Um, apart from that, we can also continue to ask questions through this document. Um, but do we have an, uh, an immediate thought about our workshop with the town council on May sixth now?
For me, that's kind of premature, and we haven't even gotten to any, um, asks either, I mean.
Well, yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole pile about the investments and how do we feel about how they're prioritized so far and what else is out there.
Right.
And do you think we need to have another meeting before that workshop? So we can hopefully, but we'll have answers to the questions that we have, and then we can formulate whatever our presentation is. We don't even know what our agenda is for that meeting, which, um, I've asked for from Sean, but I haven't asked for it formally, so I'll, I'll take an action, email Tom and Sean.
And this is, for May sixth is meant to be full board, full school board, full town council, which is a great opportunity for everybody to be at the table together.
I think what we should be prepared to have for that meeting is this document with what are the items in motion that we now, the yellow boxes that we can now answer? Um, and then what are some of the capital adjustments that we can, that we agree with?
That we can quantify.
One of the things that, yeah.
We can discuss it more, and we, I mean, we do have a few more minutes. If you guys wanna have a conversation now. I think it's safe to say, and I'll look for you guys to correct me, that there really aren't any adjustments that we wanna make, that the board would recommend making to the investments.
To the new investments.
To the new investments.
Now, you mean?
Before, before the workshop, yeah.
No.
So this, the red line kinda stays where it is. And if anything, Julie, it sounds like your projections for K two would, would only go up and not down. Current, kind of where we are.
Um, wait, I may, I may not have understood you correctly. Can you repeat that?
So, right now, if you look at the investments, where the red line is, would you make any changes to that? So would you move the red line up or down, or take any, or take anything out of the current investments?
Well, I guess, I don't remember, but I did wanna discuss the inclusion specialist after hearing about the number of children coming in with special needs and, and what that means, I was a little bit worried about that and, and wanted to have a discussion about, about that. And what is, and, and I guess I don't know enough about that position specifically. I mean, is that something that actually might have a return on investment as well as being sort of the right thing to do?
Um...
Like, meaning you may have less need for an ed tech or something in the future, if you can, if, if...
Yeah, so we can share with you the proposal as it was written by Allison and ask her to come to the next meeting to ask, really, answer really specific questions. In terms of return on investment, I think what you would, the kinds of things we would be measuring are, um, you know, behavioral interventions in the, in the, um, you know, are students able to be in the classroom more? Are students able to receive, receive services more? Are students able to be mainstreamed more? So quantifying it in sort of minutes is a way to get that return on, or kind of measure that, the value of that position. But it also would be teacher feedback, cause there would be a lot of educating the staff around what, what inclusive practices, practices look like. What is universal design, um, for all students? And so, it's really about shifting mindset as well. And the goal would be that you would have less students. Um, one of the goals may be that there are fewer students needing really, um, uh, um, out of classroom placements because they would be able to get their needs met within the mainstream classroom, which is always our goal, we're trying to mainstream as much as we can.
So I'd be really interested in that, especially knowing the, the sort of growing population.
Okay, so, but do we, are we gonna schedule another meeting?
I think you need to, yes.
Okay. And so I'll definitely ask Al- Allison to come to that one.
Thank you.
So you can hear directly from her about her vision for that role.
Really quickly, while we're still on the new investments page, has there been any more discussion of, um, sharing the human resource specialist with the town?
So we haven't had any formal discussions with the town, but Kate and I were talking about this today, and Leanne and I had a conversation about it as well. Um, that sounds like a really easy fix to say, like, great, we'll share Liam, and he'll serve both the town and the schools. Um, but I don't believe that that would help us realize the value that this position would have. We would still need another person because he's not gonna be able to absorb five hundred plus more employees and actually support them in the way that they would need to be supported. So, would it require a different level? We have a pretty low level position, um, in the budget. It's not at a director rate. Um, that's why it's a specialist and not a director. So, um, we, so I guess the answer's no, we haven't had any formal conversations about that.
Well, the other thing I was wondering is, do, does the town and the school use the same software? And all of that sort of type of stuff, I mean...
We use the same financial software and payroll software, yes. Um, I think the, the difficulty that we run up against is that this way public schools are, um, the word isn't manage, the, the, uh, the legal structure of employment in a school system is different from the legal structure of employment under a town charter. Um, so there, there are some definite, um, areas of expertise that would be different for a school employee and a town employee. Interestingly, Liam used to work for the town of Westbrook and did both, town and school. Um, I don't think he liked it very much because it was a, a very overwhelming and complex job. It was two jobs. Um, but he would certainly have a, a good lens on what that would take. And, um, so, yeah, it's, it's not something that we've gone any further having conversations about, but it's obviously a question that's out there.
I mean, it sounds good, but I don't, but...
Right.
Is it practical?
I was curious, right? The conversation had advanced since the last time we were together.
Yeah, and I think I would agree with Julie that regardless of whether we were able to leverage that relationship uh, in, in any kind of a, a way to create efficiencies, you would still need another human being.
So guys, people are coming in, I do wanna give an opportunity for public comment before we close too. Um, but are there any final burning questions?
No, I can zip it for now.
Awesome. So I think, before we leave tonight, let's try and, did you bring your work calendar? Awesome, we'll try and get another, um, meeting on the calendar before the May sixth workshop. Public comment? No, no public comment. Come on. Come on. Looking behind you, okay.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
I'm gonna go get April's sweater.
This is for our parking lot? Cause we had break last week, and we, so they're like standing every fourth meeting, and we're like standing every third.
Bordinance?
Uh, bordinance, I think.